Actually, I just wanted to become like the cabinet and board. Oh, in the leadership.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and start our meeting. I want to do a check first. Dr. Wyatt, can you hear me or hear us?
Yes, Madam President, can you hear me as well?
Yes, and then Ms. Rosales Medina, can you also hear us?
Yes, I can hear her as well.
Okay, great, I can see your picture. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to call the meeting to order. 1.1, calling the meeting to order. And we are at 1.2 for our pledge. And I don't want to fail to, let me see if this is in there for me.
President, just point of order question?
Yes.
So, the COVID rules for board members has been extended, so you can do remote?
You can.
Board members can be remote?
Yeah, you can, it's going to shortly go away, but they still can.
So, I thought the date was September, is not?
I don't remember the exact date, but I know we checked in. Karen, do you have the date? But I know she checked in, I asked her to check in to see.
Can you do an update tomorrow for it?
Yeah. Yeah, it was something.
Sure, I thought it all ended like September the 34th.
No, there was like some kind of extension for the check.
Thank you. Okay.
I do want to also mention that, I mean, I typically would not have done this, but because of an emergency, so that's why I had to do it, and I'm going to be unfortunate.
You're okay, I got it, I got the, I don't, we don't have to share it out. Okay, I believe that we're going to go to 1.2 pledge of allegiance, and I believe it's going to be Musquey Elementary, so let us stand.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, if there is no additional comments, then we'll go ahead and take the vote. And Dr. Wyatt, I forget, you're not here, so I'm going to have to man the ship. Turn it towards me.
Sorry, Madam President.
You don't have it with you there. And I think she said you all are set up too to be able to vote. Do you guys? We're fingers crossing, we're doing a check right now.
I unfortunately probably have to just say aye, so I will just say aye.
All right, well, we'll take your ayes, so noted, and Dr. Wyatt, do you have to do the same?
Uh, no, Dr. Rogers.
Oh, no, yours went through, okay, great.
It worked for me, you just have to sign in with your personal sign-in, if Ms. Medina has that.
Got it. Are you missing anyone, just cutting him? All right, motion carried, thank you. 1.4, we are now at inspirational message, and that will be Mr. Danny Tillman.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to start by thanking the district's administration, classified and our teachers. You know, the pandemic has brought some unique trials. This past week, there were districts that couldn't conduct school because a lot of the employees called off, and they didn't have enough people to be in classrooms. And our district was able to have enough folks in classrooms to allow education to continue, which I think is a big deal. And it was only done because of the work of the administration, classified staff, and our substitute teachers, our guest teachers. So I want to give a special thanks to the teachers and our guest teachers. Our district, I feel, have made the right steps in terms of navigating through the pandemic thus far. I looked at the dashboard today, and the numbers for infected students and staff continues to be low. I agree that any positive infections is a concern, but it's obvious to me that we've made the right decisions thus far in terms of when we close schools and when we open schools, and the prioritization that we've done with ensuring that we put all the protocols in place to be as safe as possible. Later in the board meeting, if we get out of the board meeting before 1 o'clock, because I might leave if we get past 1 a.m., but if we get out, if we get to board comments before midnight, and I'm still here, I will look to the board and ask that we look to agendize the concerns about the future in terms of vaccines and vaccine mandates. I think when our community has concerns and issues, we should always address it. This board has a history of doing that. So, at that, at that point, at that point, I'll ask for consensus from the board to see if we can agendize it for our next meeting. But I do want to stress that our board has taken the steps that are fair and balanced, and the goal being to be as safe as possible and not to be overzealous about actions. There are districts, including LA Unified, who have already instituted mandates, and right now, LA Unified is saying that you have to have students mandated, I think, by this month and next month. And other districts have been more aggressive. But I hear parents' concerns about vaccines, and I hear staff's concerns. You know, our district took a methodical approach to the pandemic. When the pandemic first happened, and we decided to close schools, and we didn't open, for me, as one individual board member, it was clear. Number one, we could wait until people could voluntarily take the vaccine, which would offer them some level of protection that didn't exist at the time. And my biggest fear was forcing staff, classified employees, administrators, and teachers to work in an environment that they weren't comfortable in, and then they get infected, and then they have teachers die because we forced them to come back to work, and there wasn't a vaccine available. So, once that vaccine became available, our district at that time said, then we feel we can safely open, because the risk for children was minimal. So, that became our opening. The only reason why we didn't open sooner than we did is because we were told that if we had opened, you would have kids that were in classes in March and April that would be forced to go to other schools and other classrooms, because at that time, the mandate was still six feet of social distancing. So, it would have caused huge problems. And with discussion with the community members and teachers, we decided that we would wait and not go back and forth about opening for a short period of time and moving students around and disrupting their environment, and just keep schools closed until the end of the school year. And I think that ended up being the right decision. And I say that only to, to offer proof that we are only doing it based on the information that we get, and the goal being to keep people as safe as possible, and still at the same time, offering a quality education. And so, when we have the agendized item, we discuss it, nothing's going to happen in the near future. Even the state's direction at this point is they're not going to ask for vaccination until there is full FDA approval. But I think it's important that we take the input from parents, community members, and our employees to decide on what the best next steps are, and we can always find ways to meet people that have concerns in a fair, thoughtful, and balanced way. This board and district has always done that, and I don't see it changing. So, I think it's important that we continue our philosophy and our practice of hearing people and working together to provide the best education possible for all of our students. And with that, I want to end by, again, thanking everyone for working together. Parents, thanking the students for being strong and having to go through a whole lot that none of us ever had to go through. And then thanking our classified employees, our administrators, and especially our teachers, because without teachers, education doesn't happen. And I hope that we all realize that the decisions we make in terms of policy and procedures has to be something that makes our employees feel comfortable, because without employees being in those schools, we do not have school. So with that, I look forward to working with everybody, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. And as you mentioned, definitely forward-thinking, we're going to get an update in closed session so that we can also come back out and determine if we can, moving forward with agendizing that. So, the district will be updating us based on the information that we had heard at our previous board meeting. And Dr. Flores, this is, remember, it's an inspiration.
Right, I just want to thank Mr. Tillman for your leadership and your thoughtfulness, and I really appreciate it a lot. And you're correct, our parents, our kids, our employees are classified, our administrators, our teachers, our police force, everybody is so important. Our health is important, you know, our rights are important, and so, I know this board will make the right decision, thank you.
We'll be getting an update as soon as we go into closed session, and then we can speak on that further. And hopefully, Mr. Tillman, we don't plan on being here to 2 o'clock, so help us out. And I hope if we are here to 2 o'clock, you'll be here with us. We are now moving to 2.0, special presentations and recognitions. 2.1, outstanding achievement awards, and guess what? We haven't had this in a while, and we're getting back on track to hear about the wonderful things that our students are doing, so we're excited. Ms. Monteveras, tell us what we're going to be looking at tonight.
Well, good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board, cabinet, and our guests this evening. Now is the time that we would present our outstanding achievement awards. This evening, the Board of Education will honor students, parents, and staff from three of our schools, Arrowhead Elementary School, King Middle School, and Middle College High School. The board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and to honor excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and to recognize most improvement. The board will also recognize outstanding parents and employees for their contributions. This month, just like last month, we will be recognizing our outstanding award winners a little differently than we have historically done. To keep everyone safe as we continue to navigate COVID-19 environment, we've acknowledged our honorees with their recognition items at their school instead of during this presentation. We captured a photo of that that we'll display this evening, and we invited them to join us by watching on YouTube. We want them to see and hear how proud we are of their successes and accomplishments. Besides keeping our people safe as possible during this time, this also allows us to hear the heartfelt praise of our site leaders who will tell us what makes their honorees most special. So first, I'd like to introduce Tina Murray, the principal of Arrowhead Elementary School, to tell us about her school's outstanding achievement award winners. Ms. Murray?
Welcome.
Thank you for inviting me to present Arrowhead's Outstanding Student, Parent, and Employee Awards. Please join me in recognizing Zaden Ralph, a fourth grader in Ms. Anderson's class. Zaden demonstrates outstanding citizenship and academics at school. He follows directions and completes all his assignments. He frequently participates in class discussions and is helpful to both his classmates and school staff. Zaden plans to attend college to become an engineer, so he can build tall buildings. I am sure Zaden's parents, Letitia and Zesa Ralph, are very proud of their son. Our next outstanding student.
Congratulations, Zaden, and hopefully they're watching tonight.
Our next outstanding student is Lorenzo Lopez. He's a second grader in Ms. Armenta's class. Lorenzo is very conscientious in all that he does, which is what makes him a good citizen and an excellent student. He completes all his assignments, helps his classmates, and is very responsible. Lorenzo wants to become a police officer because they drive cool cars with sirens and they help people. Congratulations to Lorenzo's parents, Anthony and Carmen, for raising such an amazing youngster.
Congratulations.
Our next honoree is Outstanding Parent Award winner, Lorraine Mosqueta. Lorraine is a mother of three Arrowhead students. Her children all have great attendance, which shows how much she cares about them and values education. On the first day of school, Lorraine saw a need at Arrowhead, and she moved in to assist very quickly. She has been a substitute recreational aide at Arrowhead ever since. Now Lorraine is constantly looking for ways to support not only her children, but all the students at Arrowhead. We can't thank her enough.
Congratulations, Lorraine Mosqueta.
Educational Assistant Three, Katie Regalado, is my choice for Outstanding Classified Employee Award. Katie has been an educational assistant at Arrowhead for five years and has an excellent work ethic. She is a team player and always maintains a positive attitude when working with staff, students, and families. Katie works with students in small groups, assists with supervision, and interprets for parents when necessary. Thank you for your dedication to the students and student success at Arrowhead.
Congratulations.
Sixth grade teacher Cynthia Webb was my choice for Outstanding Certified Employee Award. Ms. Webb is focused on meeting the needs of all her students to ensure they are successful. Her classroom has a warm, welcoming environment that promotes fairness and high expectations for all. She sets an example for her students by maintaining a positive attitude with children and adults and always seeks to improve her skills and engage her students. The relationships she builds with students and staff make her a trusted teacher and a friend everyone can count on.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for honoring the Arrowhead Elementary School family.
Thank you so much for being here.
So please join me in one final round of applause, make it loud, for Arrowhead's Outstanding Award winners this evening. So thank you. Congratulations to Arrowhead Elementary School. Now I want to invite King Middle School Vice Principal Kirk Frazier to the program.
Welcome.
All right, good evening. On behalf of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School, I am proud to be here to introduce our Outstanding Achievement Award winners. Eighth grader Fabian Torres was nominated by his teacher Chelsea Stanton for his outstanding academics, citizenship, and leadership. Fabian is a model student who was elected ASB Vice President this school year. His committed avid scholar embodies the Roadrunner ideals of academic achievement, integrity, and perseverance. Fabian has a passion for helping others. He wants to attend UC Santa Barbara and become an immigration lawyer. I'm sure his parents, Marcella Alvera and Fabian Torres, must be very proud.
Congratulations.
Our next outstanding student is eighth grader Omari Haley Carrington. She was nominated by her teacher Brian Davenport. Omari is a good student, a good citizen, a leader. She maintains a 3.6 GPA while also serving as student body president and a member of the school site council. Omari is also active in sports and in helping her fellow Roadrunners. She wants to attend John Hopkins University to become a cardiothoracic surgeon. We also want to recognize Omari's mother, Lakita Williams, for raising such a wonderful daughter.
Congratulations.
Brandy Foster is our Outstanding Parent Award winner. She's been very involved as a parent at King for more than 10 years. She served on the school site council, volunteered to support school function, is an active member of the PTO, and is willing to pitch in with any task, no matter how big or small. And she does all that while raising three children, Derek, Frederick, and Latonya. I'm proud to say that Brandy is a true Roadrunner, and I'm glad she's part of our team.
Congratulations.
Avalina Fros Vera takes pride in her work as a custodian. She has a very positive attitude and is friendly and professional in all her interactions with staff and students. Her attention to detail means that everyone in King family enjoys a clean and pristine campus environment. She is the first to arrive in the morning, and she takes the time to clean the front of the school and the parking lot, so the first thing families see at the start of the school day is a clean campus. Avalina is quite the hero of our school.
Congratulations.
Science teacher Cecilia Rojo is an inspiration to us all. She is admired by her peers and loved by her scholars, in part because of her positive attitude, her solution-oriented approach to teaching, and her willingness to go above and beyond for her scholars and the school. She leads by example as a department chair and active member of the Collegiality Committee. She is also a member of the Writing Committee for our Schools to Watch application. Cecilia believes in seeing the best in everyone, and she shows us her best every day.
Congratulations.
And all those are outstanding achievement award winners from Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for being here.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you so much for honoring our achievement winners from King Middle School. Now we would like to recognize the recipients from our final school this evening, Middle College High School. Would Principal James Espinoza please come to the podium?
Welcome.
First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for everything you do, and thank you for this opportunity. We really appreciate you. I'm happy to be here so I can tell you about our amazing scholars and staff and parent at King Middle College High School. Nisha McCain is a 10th grader in Jessica Cavallaro's class. Nisha is an outstanding middle college student because she's laser-focused on both college and career. She is preparing for a future beyond middle college and Valley College with the goal of attending UC Berkeley and majoring in criminal justice so she can become a civil rights attorney and eventually a judge. As long as she can remember, Nisha has been interested in fighting for the rights of others. But one of the reasons why our staff selected her is because not only is she a top student, but she always engages the rest of the class and helps them and immediately brings out the best in her peers. So she's already starting that fight for the rights of others. Her parents, Onika Bonds McCain and Nikell McCain, must be very proud.
Congratulations.
Our next outstanding student is senior Diana Vicencio. She was nominated by her teacher Michael Dole. Despite the challenges of the pandemic and her own initiative, on her own initiative, Diana founded both a National Honor Society and the California Scholarship Federation chapter at Middle College High School this last year. Last Saturday, Diana, who is also president of Key Club, enjoyed seeing our middle college scholars, along with San G and our Division 36 East cohorts, earn first place at Magic Mountain, the state conclave, for their spirit out of all the schools. Diana plans to attend UCLA and earn a bachelor's degree in microcell biology and a master's in biology on her way to becoming a hospital pharmacist. Let's also honor Diana's parents, Joanna Perez and Victor Vicencio, for everything they've done to support Diana and her education.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Our final MCHS outstanding student is 11th grader Venus Fernandez. She was nominated by our teachers Carlos Solorio and Grace Navarro. Venus is contagiously positive and supportive of others, helping them to be successful academically and emotionally. She's been one of our SEL heroes. Venus discovered she was interested in the mind and helping children while attending SBVC, and she wants to continue her studies at UCR to become a pediatric psychiatrist. I'm sure Venus's parents, Iris Beloso and Antonio Ramirez, are very proud of her.
Congratulations.
Judith Garcia is our Outstanding Parent Award winner. She has been an active member of our school site council, coffee with the principal, page turn, and our WASC focus group. She also works with other parents to provide rewards for our scholars. Mrs. Garcia is a proud Wolverine parent of Genesis Garcia Paez, a MCHS junior who plans on attending UCI in preparation for a helping profession, possibly counseling. What we appreciate most about Judith is her kindness, her humility, and willingness to share ideas for the benefit of not just her child, but all middle college scholars, parents, and staff, and especially for her ongoing support of our first-generation college scholars. Judith is a great Wolverine and SBC USD parent.
Congratulations.
I'm also pleased to honor Joanna Perez, our bilingual office assistant, health aide. We wouldn't know what to do without Joanna. She demonstrates positive passion, teamwork, and a focus on results in everything she does. No task is too big and no task is too small. She completes every assignment with excellence in mind. Joanna is attentive to the service of others and makes our scholars, parents, and staff feel as if they're the only customer, and that includes our Spanish speakers who benefit from Joanna's amazing Spanish translation skills. Everyone in our middle college family values, respects, and appreciates Joanna.
Congratulations.
And finally, Marissa Austin is an avid supporter of middle college, and I mean that in every sense of the word. She is our avid site lead and our senior advisor. Her positive passion and relentless dedication to the success of all scholars has helped us achieve a yearly 100% A to G completion rate and 100% graduation rate and 100% college acceptance rate. This year, Marissa took the initiative to lead our SEL focus back to campus, including our freshman summer bridge, thank you for supporting that, and our SEL support through Avid. She also helped us become an avid site of distinction for multiple years and, most recently, a California distinguished school. Thank you, Marissa, and thank you for all the outstanding people that are part of our Wolverine family, and thank you, Board, for giving us this opportunity to recognize us.
Congratulations, and thank you for being here.
I'd also like to add my appreciation for the opportunity to recognize our great students, our parents, our staff, and teachers, and just wanted to thank you all for making hope happen. Appreciate the opportunity to celebrate our outstanding award winners this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and let's give them all a hand. Great job. Thank you so much. All right, we are now moving to 3.0 closed session. 3.1 closed session public comments. Ms. Cunningham?
We have none.
We have none, all right. We will now move to 3.2. We will adjourn to closed session, and we will be back shortly, or we'll be back at 7:00. and we will be back shortly, or we'll be back at 7:00.
All right, we are back as promised. I might be a minute off, but we are back. And I'm going to move to 4.0. Actions reported from closed session. 4.1 expulsion of students, positive youth development. And be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and finding of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendation and orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed in accordance with the board rules and regulation and compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Boo? All right, I have a motion. And is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, let's prepare to vote.
I need Ms. Flor- Apigel Rosales.
Rosales Medina, are you there? She might have stepped away.
Okay, I'll put her as not present.
Okay. Thank you. You- yeah. It's delaying. Okay, you can- can you tell me? Okay, motion passed. All right, 4.2, students' recommendation for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses but recommended to youth court for other means of correction, positive youth development. And-
It's moved.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote. Same thing, is it sticking? Okay. Gotcha. All right, motion carried. Thank you. 4.3, students' recommendation for expulsion but terminated in student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court availability of other means of corrections and due process errors. Be it resolved, the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on the process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction and compliance with the Education Code Section 8900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, the expulsion is not granted.
It's moved.
It's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote. No. All right, motion carried. Thank you. 4.4, the Board petition to expunge, rescind, or modify youth court or expulsions. The Board of Education authorizes the expulsions and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
It's moved.
It's been moved in second. If there is no further discussion, let's vote. All right, thank you, motion carried. And 4.5, we didn't have any other closed section, session items. And we will now move to 5.0, public comments, 5.1. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdictions such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or fiscal matters. At this time, we are still accepting comments via Zoom and a resi- a registration form is required and available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and close at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. In person, public comments will be taken first. Participants speaking via Zoom are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And Ms. Cunningham? All right, our first speaker will be Jenny Pedersen. And I understand you'll also be doing a translation as well. You're speaking for Robin Hardy Stewart.
Yes ma'am. All right, let me pull it up here. So Ms. Stewart can be here tonight because she's short three custodians. And as you know, I've presented before in front of the Board about the shortage that we have. She says, hello and good evening, Board members. Um, I would like to take a moment to address the Board with questions about things that are currently going on in the district. At the last board meeting, you had on Tuesday, November 2nd, Section 9.0 reports by, and presentation by Dr. Funches was addressing the custodial structure in which he mentioned the five custodial supervisors were going to be put on hold until they were presented to you and they, and what, why they wanted to hire five more custodial supervisors. So my question is, why is there still people working out of class in those positions if they're not created positions yet? I ask because I have two open positions at my site and was told downtown, by downtown, that I wasn't able to have a sub in those positions till it showed up on the vacancy log so they could get paid. So how is it possible in this situation? It's, is it not the same process for hiring or filling positions for everyone? Or is it okay if they want it, it's okay? Mr. Doc Irving, my next question is for you. If we ask why they want to hire five more custodial supervisors, all we've gotten is the same answer. This is what the new superintendent wants. So is it what you want, or is it just their excuse? And since we're now considered part of MNO, site custodians being, we would like the same rights as custodians in the yard. Every year, there are allotted a shoe or boot coupon for safety shoes, but the site custodians are not allowed. The custodians at the school sites do more physical work than MNO custodians and should be at least entitled to the same rights as it is in our agreement with the district, Article 16, Safety, Section 7, Safety Equipment. This is something I would like you to look into, please. That concludes my topics for this evening, and I appreciate the time for the Board and being able to speak.
Now you're going to bring your comment.
Now it's me.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
All right. Good evening, Board members. Imagine if you will, during the summer, time only being two custodians at an elementary site, trying to do floors. Here's the process. You lay down the stripper, you scrub the edges, you work on the doorways, you scrape the sc- the gum, you scrape the stains up, use the buffer, you have to keep the stripper moving because if it dries, it stains. And it creates a stain. Then somebody needs to use the wet vac or the typhoon as we call it to pick it up, the dirty solution. Then somebody needs to come behind and rinse with clean water. You need to put a coat of sealer once it dries. Then you gotta lay a coat of wax, all while trying to continue on doing more floors. Imagine, I bet you can't, it seems kind of difficult, doesn't it, as two people? MNO has at least four or more doing this process. I'm not saying MNO isn't feeling the cringe of having to cover runs because I'm sure they are. I know, I know for a fact there are elementary day custodians that have to clean restrooms and vacuum and mop offices before the start of the school every day, along with trying to put up the flag, trying to clean outside, all while trying to have or answer radio calls while students and staff are arriving on campus. It's kind of difficult to imagine doing that by yourself in the morning when it's an hour-long process. So, Doc Irving, I would like to say thank you for acknowledging some of the classified staff. I heard from other hardworking members that you told them thank you for their hard work. And that meant that you were listening to what I said. Again, thank you for that. A little thank you goes a long way to the hardworking members of our district. Here's my question to you, sir. You were on our campus, SBHS, on Tuesday, November 8th. That, I would like to know your opinion of my campus when you were on it that day. Can we please stop the clock and give him time to answer?
He, he can't respond right now, but I think he'll, he'll make sure he reaches out to the school.
I want you to know that I personally came in that day and stayed late. I worked a 14-hour day. That was two custodians at 6:00 AM, one coming in at 8:30 to make sure you could see the difference from our first visit. To me, it was better, but not everything I wanted. I wanted to get everything done. That's why I'm giving you the numbers I'm giving you tonight. I stood before you guys on October the 19th and was asked the question of how many custodians I thought were needed. I come back to you tonight with an answer. I believe that we need three more at each high school site. That would be 20 more, 21 more. One more per continuation high school and adult ed, there we have four of those. Two more per middle school and prep schools, there are 11 of those equalling 22. And one more per elementary, that's 53. If you add the numbers, that's 100. And with MNO saying they need 20, that's 120. Please look into this, considering that we're all working as hard as we can. We're doing everything we possibly can to give you guys the best we can. Okay, um, and my last. I not only come up here to complain, but to bring some solution as well. How come we can't have students working in the custodial department? Student workers, working in the custodial department for 20 hours a week. We could create some four or six-hour positions for the cafeteria workers that are only given two and four hours. They could cover caps, after-school program, helping with campus trash, and many other areas. All the departments are short and staffed. And welders, and painters, and plumbers, and security, and secretaries. We ask that before another manager or supervisor is hired that you take care of us. My last question is, when is it right to go above a COVID liaison? When she has said her orders for people to stay home that were in close contact with a person that had a positive case and they were experiencing symptoms. This has happened. It should have never happened. So I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Andrea Schindler. Andrea Schindler, if you're here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Cabinet and Board. My name is Andrea Schindler, and I'm the mother of six, one of which, one of which is a student in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I am here this evening to address concerns that I have with the pending vaccine mandate. Being a mother for the past 25 years has been one of the most significant callings that God has placed on my life and is one of my greatest priorities. As any parent knows, each child is unique and therefore it's important to carefully consider their individual needs when making decisions, especially with those related to health and well-being. Take for example, my third son, who developed issues with his blood pressure at a young age, so much so that he's been seen by a cardiac cardiologist since he was 14 years old. As a parent, I know my son's health challenges, and that knowledge would certainly guide my decision as to whether or not the COVID-19 vaccine would be of benefit to him or not, especially considering the statistics that the CDC has already published, which states that the expected myocardial risk was significantly higher, that, I'm sorry, that the actual exhibited myocardial risk was significantly higher than expected. And especially when considering that my son already hadn't survived COVID, and when he did, he experienced mild cold-like symptoms. It has been mentioned that there may be exceptions accepted, that students would be, and that if they were accepted, that the students would be enrolled in distance learning. Which brings me to my fourth son, who also has a family history of heart issues in males at a young age. He also had COVID-19 and experienced mild symptoms. Again, as his mother, when considering the high risk of myocardial issues as opposed to the low risk of reinfection and the mild experi- mild symptoms he experienced, I would have to make the informed choice that he might not be the best for this experimental vaccine at this point in time. And so what would happen to him? The district may send him home to learn through distance learning. This discriminatory act of preventing my son from first best practices would not create a safer classroom since those who are vaccinated can still contract and spread the virus and for him could potentially lead to a worse outcome. You see, last year, our son changed dramatically during distance learning. His father and I noticed that he had become more withdrawn and melancholy. He did not appear to have the joy and activities that he used to love. His father and I were concerned, but because he was only 10, we believed he was too young to be suffering from depression. However, when his doctor confirmed that he, she had similar concerns, our son was referred for a psychiatric evaluation. It was during that evaluation that he admitted to having suicidal thoughts. The isolation of not being able to be with his friends and to interact with them socially had led to such deep loneliness that he had thoughts of no longer wanting to live. If this vaccine mandate comes to fruition, you would be forcing his father and I to decide between potentially exposing him to a life-altering, possibly life-ending myocardial condition or to bring him back to the place of isolation that caused his depression and suicidal thoughts. What kind of choice is that? Especially considering that there's another choice, a safer and logical choice to not vaccinate because he already has had COVID, survived it, and had mild symptoms. Are you, Board members and Cabinet, aware of the fact that the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and that Children's Hospitals Association, which collectively represent over 77,000 physicians and over 200 children's hospitals, declared children's mental health challenges amid the COVID-19 panic a national emergency? They pointed to research from the CDC, which found that between March and October of 2020, the proportion of mental health-related emergency department visits increased 24% for children ages 5 to 11 and 31% for children's ages 12 to 17 when compared to 2019. In the first six months of this year, the cases have risen a shocking 45% increase in the number of self-injury and suicidal cases in 5 to 17-year-olds. As the Children's Hospital President said, "We are facing a national mental health crisis in our children and teens, which requires urgent action." Yet, as a district, we would ignore these facts and statistics, ignore the socio-emotional needs of our students, and force our children who do not vaccinate go to distance learning, all while knowing that children were the least affected subgroup, uh, COVID subgroup, and while with the CDC reporting only 0.00 to 0.26 deaths with little to no symptoms and despite the fact that we know that the vaccine is not creating immunity and therefore vaccinated, children can still contract and spread the virus. The last time I was here, I read bold words that you said in a former resolution. "Whereas San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to the success of all students, irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, socioeconomic status or beliefs, and be it further result that the district shall provide a public education regardless of a child's family immigration status absent of any federal, local, or state law or local court decision."
Time.
"I was proud of this Board in that moment. The morning after I woke up, I had a sick feeling. Were you only bold in that moment because you knew how much money you would lose if students were removed? What if our Board doesn't care about forcing vaccines on children because you don't believe it will cause a loss in revenue? I pray that's not true. Our children, my children, are not just dollar signs waiting to be cashed in on. They're valuable individuals with the right to learn and thrive and have healthy lives with informed adults advocating for them, not districts and not pharmaceutical companies that only see their monetary worth. I'm asking Board members, please, please write a resolution that demonstrate you believe in the non-monetary value of our students and our children. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerel Shell. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing it, the first name right, Shell is the last name? Good evening.
All right, I'd like to say thank you to Superintendent Irving, members of the Cabinet and members of the Board for listening to me tonight.
Can you get closer to the mic, I can hear you, because I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I will be speaking to you as a educator and as a parent of six, including, um, a second grader who attends this district at Urbida. I've spent the last 18 years in STEM education, from a classroom teacher, project director, site administrator, and professor. In the education community, we have experienced a shift in educational goals in public education. We've moved from merely expecting our students to memorize facts, regurgitate information back on low-stakes multiple choice to trying to develop an understanding, a critical analysis. Common Core is pushing us towards this, the next generation of science. We're re-facing the way we want our students thinking, yet how we're acting in this moment is we're making decisions without looking at the facts. Common Core standards want our students to write opinion pieces based on topics, supporting texts, and a viewpoint with reason and information. Common Core mathematics wants them to be able to look at data, ask questions, research, and validate their decisions. Next Generation Science wants them to be able to argument from evidence in the form of a claim, evidence, and reasoning. So we're asking our students to be able to do that. I ask us, are we doing that? Now, I first want to talk to you guys about a basic experimental design. When we basically do an experimental design, we break it into two groups. We have a control group and an experimental group. If we vaccinate our population, we've lost our control group. Second, all groups must be normalized. Normalization means that the groups that are selected out must have standards equal to other groups. We're not normalizing our data in this, we're just gathering information and making decisions. So I want to talk to you guys about some of the decisions that they're trying to make. Sample size is a big issue here. We're dealing with an entire population, a global population, a California population, a United States population. A standard sample size, to be relevant, needs to be about 10%. The sample size they're using in looking at our kids is 3,100 kids. We have over 24 million kids. We chose 3,100 and didn't normalize it. That's an invalid way to look at it. Now I want to look at some data with you guys. So I handed you, um, a packet. So if you look at the, uh, front. We'll go forward real quick, running out of time. If you look at the chart, you'll see a chart that is titled, um, Expected Versus Observed Numbers of Myocarditis. What that is, is that swelling of the heart. This is the most scary thing that's happening with this vaccine. When you count the numbers in our males, that, from zero to four, or I'm sorry, from 12 to 17, the expected amounts were zero to four, with, that's a range of four, we saw 128. That's 32 times in That's a range of 4. We saw 128. That's 32 times inspected. That's our youngest. Okay? The next code is 18 to 24. Theirs was 31.3 times what was inspected. If you look at what the people who are getting the vaccine are experiencing five times more cardiac swelling. Some of the symptoms they're observing, if you look above that chart, these are serious symptoms. 86% had chest pain. 61% had an ST or T wave abnormality. That means they basically had a heart attack. They noticed that they had cardiac enzyme elevation. So this is serious heart problems with youth. This is what's coming out of this vaccine. My question is, do we make decisions based on the fact that they say the risks are outweighed by the benefits? The benefits aren't there. We looked at 3,100 students, 3,100. How many students do we have in this district? Are we going to make the decision off of that? The statistics don't map out. The system they're using bears, the CDE flat-out says that's not what it's designed for. It's designed for scientists like me to make a hypothesis. It presents a question to us, we make a hypothesis, and we research it. CDE made the hypothesis, but they didn't research it. They said the risks outweigh the rewards. Therefore, what they're saying is 96 deaths over 700 cardiac problems in our students.
Time.
I ask you, if we're asking our students to make decisions based on facts, to be able to back up their evidence, as adults, shouldn't we model the same thing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allen Abrego.
Before I start, I'm going to speak and my wife's going to speak. We'd like to combine our time.
And Christina is with you?
Correct.
Okay, I have both. Okay.
And if you could just let me know when my time's up so my wife can have an opportunity. And then, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my wife and I have an issue of bullying at Cajon High School. And we've, I have three kids, we have three kids together. My oldest daughter is in high school. We've never experienced bullying until recently. Probably within the last three days. And right now, it's just starting off as rumors. And we're trying to go about things the right way. Things changed for my daughter around September 21st. And the issue that we're having is not just bullying with students. It's now become an issue with, she's an athlete, and it's now coming from her coach. So on September 1st, we reported a bad act from a coach to the athletic director, to the vice principal. We thought this was handled. We specifically asked, is there going to be any retaliation to our daughter? And it's happened. We're having issues because this is now becoming bigger, and my daughter's now a junior in high school. She's had no issues with this coach prior to this. And now, all of a sudden, as soon as we reported his allegations to the coach, who's running a private business on public school grounds, he's retaliating against my daughter. He's trying, today, we tried to meet with the vice principal at Cajon High School. We tried to meet with athletic director, my wife did. They belittled her, they shut her down. You have three men, a coach, an athletic director, and a vice principal that told her, "I wish your husband was here to talk to us." She is capable of handling any issue at that school against my daughter. I'm infuriated. Before I run out of time, this is a regulation 5131.2, bullying. This is your guys' document. You wrote it. Board Policy Manual, San Bernardino City Unified School District. Original adopted date, May 21st, 2018. I'm going to skip to the end. The San Bernardino Unified School District wants to ensure that all students and staff are free to receive an education and to work in a bully-free, non-hostile, learning-work environment. Retaliation of any kind is considered bullying. They tried to tell us, "We can't file a formal complaint of retaliation" because they don't see any evidence of it. This is the second, third paragraph from that same regulation. "Each complaint of bullying should be promptly investigated." She called Monday morning, asking for an appointment with the vice principal. He said, "I'm busy. I'll try to fit you into my schedule." She showed up to that school, sat in front of his office for three hours. Three hours. Well, he walked in and out and said, "I have time for you. Now I don't. Please step out of my office. I have to talk to somebody else." "I have time for you. Please step out of my office. I have time to talk to you." They're supposed to be there for my daughter. She went there, did the right thing, talked to them in person. We've talked to the coach in person, we've talked to the athletic director in person, we've talked to the vice principal in person. We're trying to do the right thing. State left her inside the vice principal's office today by herself. The athletic director walked out, the vice principal walked out, the coach walked out and said no word, and had her excuse herself from their own office. This is ridiculous. This should not be tolerated. In fact, it's actually in here. San Bernardino City Unified School District prohibits retaliation behavior against any complainant or any participant in the complaint process. I'm asking you guys to do one of two things. Follow up on this and investigate it the proper way, or change this.
Time.
Do I have anything else to say?
My name is Christina Abrego. My daughter, Catherine Abrego, is a third-year varsity tennis player that lettered as a freshman. She walked in there, she has almost a 5.0 GPA. Perfect attendance, never missed a match, never missed a practice. Went through the COVID year with me driving her and fellow teammates to matches. She's been there respecting her coach because she knows she respects authority. This whole season, we started out with him respecting my daughter as a third-year returner on his varsity team. He was giving her praise where it was due, and she was golly appreciated, but she knew she earned it. Soon as he approached me and said, "I'll give your daughter a good deal and give her private lessons, and I'll give you a good cost for it" to make my daughter better. He's a coach. You are there. You ready to get paid, coach my daughter. I don't need extra to pay for him to do what he needs to do. When we brought that to attention, a lot of stuff started going down. During a varsity match at Cajon, the game was still going on. As other girls cheered on their fellow teammates to finish their matches, the coach went to another court with students not from Cajon and did a private lesson while the girls were still playing tennis. My husband said, "Coach, you need to respect those girls. You need to go out there and watch them." My daughter wasn't even playing. It was other girls, and he did that. He did his own personal job on campus, charges his own students, private lessons on public school. We said, "No, again, we don't want it." Every single time we did something, he moved my daughter. She's a great singles player. She's actually number one, number two on the team. This year, he moved her to doubles after she said, "I don't care to do doubles," but she did it as her team because she knows her team needed her. As he do it, mid-season, he brought another player in. So my daughter decided, he put my daughter with her, and yes, they did good. My daughter became a semifinalist at CBL as a junior, one of the first for Cajon to go that far. She worked her butt off. And my daughter, as the only going to be next year, the four-year returner, went to her coach and said, "Coach, I want to be captain next year. I earned it. I know I could do this. I've been here." And he told my daughter, "We'll talk about it." When he started talking about it, and I go, and she's standing next to me at CBL, and I said, "I heard my daughter talk to you." He told me, "His offer for lessons is still available. She's not there as a player yet to be captain material." At her banquet on Sunday, and I'll let you know, I've been there every match and every game possible, supporting every single one of those girls with snacks, food. I fed CBL sandwiches every year, not just to my kids, to other schools too, because a lot of the kids didn't have parents there. I was there for everyone, not just our school. So at her banquet, the coach said, "This will be the first time in 20 years I will not announce a captain, but I will announce a team parent, a team sister's over." That crushed my daughter. She's like, "I earned that spot to get that recognition." This is the first time that she's seen that she got passed over and did not recognize for all the hard work that he said show. She goes, "I don't need to tell him. I showed him. Even though I went up to him, I still showed him." And he disrespected her in front of everybody by using me as a target, saying that I'm pretty much not good enough to stand as a team mom for her. So she took it as, "My mom's not good enough? After all the other moms, maybe we'll stand next to the captain. Am I good enough?" And she is a strong person. She held it together for every one of her teammates. She came home and cried, and my daughter does not cry. She goes, "I earned it. Why, after 20 years after he made the speech, was it an exception this year that I'm not good enough to be considered?" After everything she's done, after everything I've done, then, instead of having awards, he didn't give the girls any awards, saying, "They're not here, no shovels, nothing, no letters, no nothing to show these girls that they earned something, they something." He gives them a Christmas card with a gift or ticket for his business that he advertised for a free lesson.
At Cajon High.
At Cajon High School, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And he asked my daughter, I know it's time, he asked my daughter to come back and help one of our girls that's going to CIF. And today, my daughter's been there with that girl every single day, but today he told her not to come back.
Time. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Abrego. Your information is going to be given to the superintendent. And he will be following up with you both. Mr. and Mrs. Abrego. The superintendent will let, go ahead, Mr. Irving.
Mr. Abrego, Mr. and Mrs. Abrego, I will follow up with you. We'll have your information right here, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Letitia Bush.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Hello, my name is Letitia Bush, and I am a fully vaccinated as well as my oldest child.
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Sorry.
Okay.
My name is Letitia Bush, and I am fully vaccinated as well as my oldest child. I would like to say that I am not anti-vaccine, but I am also not pro-vaccine. I don't feel there's been enough research for me to vaccinate my children, 12 and younger. I trusted the science for myself and my oldest. Now I am in need of a booster. They haven't even let us parents know what this would do to our children who haven't hit puberty yet. I am not against anyone who wants to get the vaccine. I am pro-medical choice and pro-medical freedom. Now I am being forced to choose between education or a vaccine. Homeschooling my children wasn't the best action for me because I have a child with a speech problem who is in need of extra help. My children are very bright and intelligent and need to have interactions with their teachers and peers. For this reason, I strongly believe it should be the parent's choice to vaccine, not a mandate. However, I still agree they should wear their mask and social distance to protect themselves and others. But I will not vaccinate my children until I feel it's safe. I am their mother. No one wants better for them than me. And I know what's best for my babies. And I trust that you guys know what's best for your children as well, to not be forced to make them take a vaccine that we don't have, all the evidence that could be provided to us. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Nagrete. Mrs. Nagrete? Thought I saw her. I'm not sure if she stepped out. I will call her. Welcome.
Good evening. Ephesians 6:16, "Above all, carry the shield of faith so that you can extinguish the flaming arrows of the evil one." Good evening. It's good to be here once again with all of you tonight. When I was last here, I presented you with a resolution from Apple Valley Unified School District opposing the COVID-19 shot mandate. Tonight, I present you with a few more. LaCerna Valley Unified School District, Hesperia City Council, and the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, who have all passed resolutions to ban the use of vaccine passports in their cities and counties and the districts that will not impose the mandates on their students nor their staff. Also, Mark Twain Union Elementary School Board and Happy Valley School Board. The resolutions I have presented to you are only a few of many who are really listening to their staff, students, parents, and constituents. Mark Twain Union Elementary School Board was quoted as saying that they will not take coveted public education away from the children the district serves or stand in opposition to the children and families when a parent exercises the right to protect the health and welfare of their child. I believe you need to take the same stance. What might be good for one may not be good for all. We are all here to ask you to do the same. Find the courage to do what is right and be on the right side of history. Also, the testing of the unvaccinated is completely discriminatory. We teach our children about discrimination during the civil rights movement. Well, here they are, living through this new civil rights movement and modern-day segregation. How are you all okay with this? I refuse to raise my kids in a world which sees someone as unclean because they refuse an experimental medical procedure, which doesn't even protect them from the virus it was meant to protect them from. Because let's be honest, if the shot was protecting them, why would it matter if Tom Dick and Harry had the shot or not? It's ridiculous. Let me ask you the same question that Mimi Crandall, a retired registered nurse, asked the San Diego Board of Supervisors about a month ago. Why do the protected need to be protected from the unprotected by forcing the unprotected to use the protection that didn't protect the protected? Make it make sense. Now we are seeing the media start to report on how climate change and cannabis use in young kids will be the result of youth with heart issues. Really? That's not journalism. That is conditioning. The fact of the matter is that we will see the rise in these types of diseases in young kids due to these experimental shots. Our children are not lab rats. It's insane to think that people are more outraged about experiments being conducted on animals than our own children. These are crimes against humanity, and the fact that you still have not found the courage to pass a resolution in which you will not partake in these mandates makes you complicit to these crimes. Stand up for all these teachers, students, and parents who have been coming and will continue to come before you. We will support you. We will rally behind you if you stand up and support us and rally behind us. We are counting on you, each and every one of you, to help in protecting our children. You have the power to stand up and do something that will shine a bright light over our city. Do what is right and stand up for the choice. Medical mandates have no place in a free society. Do what is right. Don't be a part of this tyranny, and allow us to continue with our freedom to choose what is right for our children. what is right for our children. I'm sure you have all heard the saying, "Don't poke the bear," while the mama bears have been awakened. And we won't back down. For me personally, growing up in the Inland Empire, living all of my adult life in San Bernardino should be enough to tell you that I won't go down without a fight. My kids are my life. They mean everything to me, and coming after them was the last straw. Please remember my name. Please remember this face, because I'm in the ring and I'm ready to win with a knockout. Thank you.
And I will call Ms. Negrete. Okay, you are here.
Board members, let me remove this so you can hear me. Plus, you remove that in the back when you're eating, so why not, right? I want a plate for you, since we're staying on the topic of COVID. Hold on.
Hi, this is Mr. Reiser at the Royal High School. Just calling concerning some issues with the COVID testing for your daughter. If you could give me the call back at 381-4295, I'd appreciate it. Thanks. Bye.
Message saved. Saved message.
Hi, this is Michelle. I'm the COVID liaison for Royal Valley High School. I was wondering if you could give me a call back at the school. My phone number is 909-381-4295, extension 306. Thank you.
So staying with the COVID and the hypocrisy and everything else, right? A few weeks ago, I got a call from the liaison who said, "The message." You know, there's nothing to the message. There's no content, there's no saying what it's about, other than that she's the COVID liaison. I sent her an email. I have learned, just like I shared with Dr. Funches, this district, and you know, most of you now have been a parent for a very long time for this district, this district has already created a mistrust with parents, because when we do call personnel, what they have learned to say is that, "We must have misunderstood." And so when you continue to do this and play those stupid games with parents, let's just keep it in writing. So I like my communication with staff in writing. So when they called, left no message, you know, you heard the vice principal that called two hours after the liaison called, saying there were some COVID testing issues, and it's like, "Wait a minute, what happened? Did you test my daughter? Like, what's going on?" No, nothing had happened. Little did I know, a few hours later, my husband would be called into a meeting with the Assistant Superintendent, Labor Relations, that wannabe Environmental Safety Officer, who's the unqualified guy that you guys hired? Eric Beter, that's right, Eric Beter. So with him and his principal, in 13 years that my daughter has been enrolled in this school district, not once has my husband been involved in any of the decisions about her education. Not once. We very much separate that whole employee and parent role. I'm the one that always gets called. Why did it turn into this? I don't know, but of course, my daughter was given the ultimatum, well, my husband was given the ultimatum. And the reasoning behind that was that they couldn't get a hold of me, which I emailed them, I have proved, I included those emails to you, I forwarded those emails to you, Dr. Funches, and I shared. You know, there was nothing, there was no reply, they ignored, the COVID liaison ignored the first email. And then we have, you know, Mr. Reiser, who ignored the email that I sent to him, wanting to know, "What were those issues?" He ignored it. And then, of course, that turned into a, what was it, a coercion intimidation meeting with my husband to say like, "Hey, like, your daughter needs to be tested tomorrow or quarantined." But here's the thing. So my daughter, who had no symptoms, had not been exposed over the 14 days, she was supposed to be staying at home, she plays every single sport. But yet, I hear you, Dr. Rodriguez, you came out from the back, and you've been hacking over and over, and he's right next to you, and these masks are not supposed to be, you know, protecting everybody. So in this situation, Dr. Funches, there are symptoms. We don't know whether she's been tested or not, but there are symptoms. My daughter was not hacking, my daughter was not coughing, but she was gonna make to stay again, because they had already done it to her one time. So again, this is coercion into getting something done, because I had already told the COVID liaison, "You're not gonna test her, because you're not going to put her information into that third-party agency that's doing this, the one that sends her the email." And yet, they violated that. I don't know if they shared that document. I put it in there. I decline to have that shared. So now moving forward with that whole, you know, hypocrisy of what's going on, let me share with you what I found, and let's see if we can all be on the same page.
I wouldn't demand to be mandatory, but I would do everything in my power, just like I don't think masks have to be made mandatory nationwide.
Can we mandate vaccines across the country? No, that's not a role that the federal government, I think, even has the power to make.
We cannot require someone to be vaccinated. That's just not what we can do. It is a matter of privacy to know who is or who isn't.
No, definitely not. You don't wanna mandate and try and force anyone to take a vaccine. We've never done that. We don't wanna be mandating from the federal government to the general population. It would be unenforceable and not appropriate.
So this is the repeat, right?
As a parent, I am asking you, please agendaize the mandate. Don't wait until you're up for reelection. Make a decision now before the end of 2021. You either say that you're gonna stand against it and let us parents make the decision, or you're gonna support it, so it'll dictate the next election. But do it now. Don't hide behind the timeframe. Do it now. Thank you.
And those were all of our in-person. And Ms. Cunningham? We'll go to our virtual.
Okay, our first caller would be Anthony Leonardi. Dr. Leonardi, if you're available, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I'm Dr. Anthony Leonardi. I was educated in San Bernardino City Unified School District, and I became an immunologist, a scientist, through Johns Hopkins and the National Institutes of Health in immunology. So I just wanna share some things about the virus with you. It is, it's unfortunately mutated quite a bit, and it's gonna be with us for a long, I think, a long time. As people did say, the vaccines are great at preventing a lot of serious illness and stuff, but unfortunately, after some time, immunity can wane, and people can recatch the virus. That's because it's like typical coronaviruses, where they can reinfect, even if you've had some immunity. So actually, people that have caught this coronavirus before, after a number of months, they're able to be reinfected. So that's actually why they still have a mandate, or they still ask people to be vaccinated, even if they've caught the virus once before. That's because immunity will wane after some time. Virus is also a bit worse than your common, well, not a bit worse, much worse than your common cold, because it has a few little machines on it that makes it worse. One of them is if you're in cleavage type, it allows the virus to spread between cells with contact. Another thing is a super antigen. This one was, is a bacterial super antigen that's on the virus, and it's able to stimulate the immune system very strongly. So it actually causes some autoimmunity. So unfortunately, it's gonna be, it's gonna keep coming frequently, probably every year. And just like common colds, it's gonna reinfect, and it won't get lighter as it reinfects. It can get worse as well. So that's an unfortunate aspect of it, because it's much stronger than a cold. It's a SARS virus, so people that are infected, you know, it's gonna be like rolling the dice. Unfortunately for kids, about 1% of them are hospitalized when they're infected. And this is actually, these hospitalizations can be more severe than myocarditis. So myocarditis from the vaccine is treatable. It's, you give steroids, and the inflammation can subside, okay? The other conditions are quite dangerous, and they're quite common at 1%. The virus is also able to harm the brain, so it causes T-cells, which are a cell in the immune system, to go to the brain after infection, and it's causing a lot of long-term symptoms in people. One study recently showed that about 40% of people are getting what's called long COVID, so that's basically persistent symptoms. And some people are trying to, are saying now that it's persistent virus, that it doesn't go away. It stays, and it hides out in a part of your immune system called monocytes and macrophages. And they're trying to say that some, the symptoms that are remaining in those people are because it's staying in the monocytes and macrophages. So what's gonna happen is they're gonna end up rolling out pills. So they have a protease inhibitor pill coming out soon, and that's the same type of pill that they give people with HIV, a protease inhibitor. Personally speaking, you know, for myself, I'm probably going to be taking a protease inhibitor, because I'll be on the front lines seeing people with coronavirus next year. So I will be vaccinated and taking a protease inhibitor for this virus that is not going to go away. So I think the best that we can do is probably, you know, use masks, and I don't know about you all, but I will be taking a protease inhibitor and be vaccinated. But I really wish you all the best of luck, because it's not gonna get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. The next speaker is Melissa Renee. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Speak again.
Um.
Okay, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the help. Okay, so my name is Melissa, and first of all, I just wanna give a shout-out to all of the parents who stepped out. I wanna say, I see you. Thank you. I appreciate you. You guys are awesome. And there are so many parents that I know, that I've spoken with personally, that wanted to be here, that just felt like they couldn't find the words, and so I just wanna say that I appreciate you. And I know some of you were nervous, and I just, I find it unbelievably encouraging and inspiring, so, especially in this district, you know? So I am here to voice my support for the adoption of a resolution against the pending vaccine mandate. So last week, quite a few parents sent over email requests to the board, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with, requesting that an agenda item be added to discuss such a resolution. So, and I just wanna, I wanna say something, because, you know, the majority of the people that were up here are reasonable people, they're not anti-vaccine, right? They're saying that they're fully vaccinated in some cases, their children are vaccinated, my kids are fully vaccinated, but we are anti-tyranny. We are your reasonable, freedom-loving parents, friends, and neighbors. We are the people that you know, we are the parents of the children that attend your schools, and I just, I wanna emphasize that, because this is, these are very reasonable arguments, there's a lot of numbers, you guys have heard a lot of facts tonight. And I would even say this, if you're over 60 and you have comorbidities, I mean, do your research, get the shot, it might make sense for you, you know, but it is your choice, but it does not make sense for our children. You know, and I wanna go over some numbers, these are some of the same numbers that I think you guys have heard tonight, but maybe a little bit different. So to date, there have been roughly 800 children in the United States who have died of COVID-19 out of 73 million children nationwide. This is statistically 0%. My children face more danger every day getting into a car with me, so my kids should not get vaccinated. The numbers say it does not make sense. According to VAERS in the US alone, there have been 1.72 million adverse events, 91,982 hospitalizations, and 18,461 deaths as of today. And these are all vaccine-related injuries. Schools that have voted against vaccine mandates, and I think one other lady had, went over this as well, another recent one is Calaveras Unified, but definitely Apple Valley, Victor Elementary, Hemet Unified, East Whittier School District. So a lot of close school districts have actually made the decision not to enforce vaccine mandates, based on what their parents have been telling them. And there was an article that came out today, that as of Sunday, California's seven-day case rate was 113.4 cases per 100,000 people, and this was according to the CDC data, right? But it's much higher than the 72.7 cases per 100,000 people reported in Texas, and more than double Florida's rate of 50.1. The Republican governors of both of those states signed legislation restricting vaccine mandates, and yet somehow their case rate is much lower. How does that work out? Right? So I definitely like an answer to that one, probably not from you guys, but, you know, maybe from the government. And, you know, just keep in mind, everyone has been pointing this out, COVID vaccines can only reduce symptoms, they do not prevent infection or spread. The CDC had to change their definition of what a vaccine is to fit the limitations of the COVID-19 quote-unquote vaccine. It's not an immunization. There's no such thing as a COVID-19 immunization, because it does not cause you to be immune. So it's just a pre-therapeutic. And there's also many nations that are actively suspending the use of the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines, including Finland, Iceland, and Sweden. Recently, Taiwan suspended the use of Pfizer and Moderna for teenagers after concerns of myocarditis. They are not even considering vaccinating children ages 5 to 11. And then last, I am a Christian, and I think last week I talked to you guys about Romans 13, but this week I'm taking a different text. So nowhere in the Bible are you guys gonna find authority given to the civil government in the area of preventative health. In fact, each instance where infectious disease is mentioned, the authority to quarantine resides in the church leaders, not the state. Leviticus 13, Luke 17:12-14, and Mark, Chapter 1, verses 40-44. So even if we were to grant the argument that the state does have authority, which scripture really doesn't at all, right? I would like to point out that, if you notice in the passages above, people were only restricted if symptoms were present. So, you know, I'm a Christian, I like to give all, do authority to God, and I just wanna thank again all the parents that came up to speak, and also thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lena Berkovich. If you're available, please unmute.
Can everyone hear me?
Good evening, yes, we can.
Oh, thank, okay. Thank you so much to the board for allowing me this opportunity to make a public comment. I really appreciate it. My name is Lena, and I am a San Bernardino County resident and a wife of a military healthcare worker in this county. I attended elementary, middle, and high school in the city of San Bernardino, and I love San Bernardino very much. I wanted to speak today to encourage adults and children in our community to get vaccinated, to protect themselves and those that they love from COVID-19. As the wife of a military healthcare worker, it scares me that people in our community are still not taking this seriously and recognizing the devastation that COVID is inflicting on the families. Last month, Newsweek, California News Time, ABC 7 Chicago, ABC 13 Houston, and Texas Monthly shared the story of Ziren Futs, a 10-year-old boy from Huntsville, Texas, who developed heart attacks and then gangrene as a result of COVID infection not allowing his heart to pump blood. His mother was given a choice of amputating his arms and legs, which they estimated would give him a 25% chance of survival, or go without the amputations and not have any chance to live. She made the very difficult choice to remove him from life support on October 13th to end her child's suffering. This story is absolutely horrific, and it terrifies me to think that any person in my community or elsewhere could have to go through this. Please follow the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's recommendation to vaccinate children 5 to 11 against COVID and minimize the chances of harm from this life-ruining virus. At the start of the pandemic, before vaccines were available, I lost a loved one due to COVID. It was horrifying to watch and be able to do nothing as such a lively, talkative man became unable to even speak in just a matter of days. Watching a loved one suffer this way is unforgettable. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Marie Green. Please unmute if you're available.
I came here, I'm here because I wanted to speak about my daughter. Well, you've heard Dr. Leonardi, and you've heard the previous woman. Well, you've heard Dr. Leonardi, and you've heard the previous woman speak about the 1% and the children who get COVID and the things that can happen. I want to tell you what can happen when a vaccine goes wrong. My daughter, who is 16 years old, she received the first Pfizer vaccine on April 13th of 2021, and she had no side effects, other than a sore arm. On May the 4th, she received her second dose, and that's when everything kind of went downhill. She came home, she said that she felt like she'd been hit by a bus, and this was shortly after she had received the vaccine, the second dose. She had a headache, she said it felt like someone was squeezing her head and like she had air bubbles. I was rubbing her head on my lap, and she was having what I thought were cold chills at the time. We have since found out that that's not the case because she still has them six months So throughout the next three weeks, or 20 days, she was having these chills, having the headaches. She was staying in her room with the lights off, couldn't stand noise, and this was a perfectly healthy 16-year-old child on May the 3rd. On May the 23rd, I received a huge promotion at work, I was coming home to celebrate, and I get a call from her father that night at 7 o'clock, and he said to meet him at the emergency room, something had gone wrong. I got to the emergency room, and my daughter couldn't speak. She was stuttering and couldn't get her words out, and she looked like somebody who had advanced Parkinson's. She has head tremors, she has face and neck tremors. She has what we call spastic tremors, where certain lights or movement, she can't look up or down, she can't look to the right, she can't even write at school. And it has been diagnosed as a vaccine injury. So it is being treated as a traumatic brain injury at this point. That is how they're going to treat her. She has, her whole life has been put on hold, nothing has changed since May the 23rd. She still has the spastic tremors, she still has all of those. We have had to fight with the medical field to even acknowledge the fact that it was a vaccine injury. We have basically had to fight for every single test that she's had. We have had to pay out of pocket because our insurance says that it is not covered. It has been a battle, a constant battle with no help. And the government turning its head and a lot of the medical field denying that this is happening until recently. And, you know, I just want to say that we weren't offered the opportunity to be informed of what could happen to the children with this vaccine. And, you know, now that it has been acknowledged, now that we do know that these vaccines are causing injuries such as hers, you know, it's kind of the attitude that we sacrificed a few to save the many, but we are talking about children. That may be accepted when you're talking about adults to some people, but we are talking about children, and it's not acceptable, not by any means. You know, this is a lifelong injury for her, there is no turning back what has been done. She has chronic fatigue, she has constant migraines, she's afraid to go out in public a lot because she's afraid that she's going to have the spastic tremors and somebody's going to think she's having a seizure, and it's embarrassing, and she's 16. We created a Facebook page called Little's Fight to try and keep in touch with our family and friends without having to text everybody, and it went viral. And we found out that her symptoms are not rare at all. These vaccines are injuring these kids, and the reason that you haven't heard of so many of them is because they've just gotten their first dose for the five to 11-year-olds here.
Fine.
And so three months from now, or six months from now, I think that we'll be seeing a lot more of this. I'm just saying, parents be informed and stand strong. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ernest Ramirez. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, my name is Ernest Ramirez. I live in South Texas, was a father of a 16-year-old boy, healthy son. I was a single parent. I raised my son by myself, and he was a good kid. I loved the hell out of him, he was my best friend. I've been traveling all throughout Texas speaking, done over 16 interviews with Christian stations, Alex Jones, Ivory Hacker. Now I have Washington Times asking for my number, they want to interview me also. My son was a healthy teenage boy. He took the Pfizer vaccine because my government said it was safe. Five days after receiving the vaccine, he collapsed. I sent his autopsy to Dr. Peter McCullough out of Baylor College. He looked over the autopsy, and he told me my son's heart was over twice the normal size of a teenage boy. My son was healthy, he ran every day, and he played baseball since the age of seven. I coached him. I don't understand, they're trying to mandate these kids. I mean, I could just say, you know, that's your problem, not mine, because I lost mine already, but I'm fighting for all the children. Y'all shouldn't have to ma, y'all shouldn't mandate this. Leave our kids alone. Their bodies are just developing, let them grow, let them get fully developed, and then let them make the choice of getting vaccinated or not. I'm vaccinated, I'm not going to lie about that. I did it because to protect my son, and I thought it was the right thing to do. I was wrong. Like I said, my son was my best friend. We're always together. I love the heck out of it. Now, look at me, I'm alone, I come to an empty house, no more hugs, no more dad, I love you, nothing. You know, now, where do you think I'm spending Thanksgiving? Where do you think I'm going to spend all my holidays? That's, that's where I'm going to spend it. Take care of your babies, leave our children alone, let them grow. I mean, if you want to, you're grown people. Do what you, you know, if you want to take the vaccine, take the vaccine. I'm not telling you what to do. Like I said, I am vaccinated. I have met a lot of injured children. On my trip to DC, I spoke at the Capitol with senators, and a bunch of injured adults and children, and it's not worth the risk. I would give anything to have my son back. I don't want anyone else to go through what I'm going through. You know, I am my son's voice, I'm Junior's voice. I've been asked to go to California speaking in person, which I'm going to do, and I'm going to continue traveling all through the US, not to force this on our children, you know. I mean, everybody makes their own choices, it's just starting. I can only imagine all the kids that are going to suffer from this. Hopefully none of them pass like mine. I just want to put that warning out to you all. Please don't do this, it's not worth the risk. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Hardy Brown. Please unmute. Yes.
He said, he asked me to speak for him.
Yes.
Okay, this is from Hardy Brown, publisher emeritus from Black Voice News, and also former board member there at the school district. The Kennedy Center put on a national forum on school-based mental health, a national priority. The school district was introduced, and Harry "Doc" Irving was introduced as superintendent. So you're the unanimous decision to select him based on what he has done in the past for students was on display to the whole, for the whole nation. If for some reason, some of you might not be proud of the recognition, I am, and others in the community are proud of that recognition. Doc made a statement at the forum that has stuck with me, and I'm sure he's made it before, but Doc said, "Data will tell us where we are, not who we are." And it dawned on me as a former school board member for 12 years, we made policy decisions based on data we gathered on students' annual achievement in all areas by gender and race. We used the same approach when it came to staff. We also monitored parent participation, including how we treat them when they come on campus. So I appreciate the approach you're taking when it comes to being community people involved in data gathering. So in my, in my opinion, you're going in the right direction. Another statement was made by a former, by a forum panelist, Thomas Scarreese, that stuck with me, and it helped me to come to my decision on leadership for the board in December. The quote was taken from Winston Churchill. It was, "I no longer listen to what people say, I just watch what they do. Behavior never lies," end of quote, Winston Churchill. I went back and I watched the behavior of all of you as board members at board meetings, and based on the behavior and the skills of Dr. Scott Wyatt and Myra Sabelas, your behavior has, as board members, have earned my respect and support for president and vice president of this board. As a former school board member, I'm aware of the tradition of selecting the president and vice president of SBCUSD leadership. I'm also aware of how important it is for that leadership to have the support of the community with those selected leaders. I want you to know that you have my full support because it's important for all of the district students to reach their full potential. I think you have demonstrated the kind of leadership qualities necessary for this district at this time and place. From my experience, the relationship between the president and the superintendent is the glue that keeps the district moving forward. I say in closing once again, thank you for selecting Harry "Doc" Irving for our superintendent, and hopefully you agree to select board members Wyatt and Sabelas for, to lead you. Thank you and stay safe. Hardy Brown.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Grace Beatty. Please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First of all, I would like to offer my condolences to Ernest Ramirez. Good evening, public servants and elected officials. I am Grace Beatty, and I am a teacher and union rep at Del Valleho Leadership and Steam Academy. I am compelled to speak tonight because this board targeted our school. They took away our school's resources, classrooms, and bathrooms, and gifted them to a charter, Savant, that is owned and operated by a board member's daughter, in addition to over a half a million of taxpayers' dollars. 11 classrooms and six bathrooms are a lot to lose, without even verifying the number of students attending in the charter. I received a rebuttal soon after my previous comments to this board concerning Savant. Dr. Wyatt, I am positive that information did not derive from you, because I asked you to make public the state of all charters in our district. The information I received came straight from the dashboard. I am all too familiar with that information, and I know for certain the number of students that attend Savant. The numbers do not match. Savant has fifth graders in attendance. According to this board, Savant cannot be placed at an elementary site because they would be in competition with elementary students. Yet housing fifth graders this year puts them in direct competition with our site next year. In our A Wing, their doors are open, a violation of the on-campus intruder. Our counselor's office is next door to two of the rooms. The other day, the sounded church hymns and affirmations filled the air when our counselor was meeting with parents. What must happen before you step in? A tragedy? Cars inundate our campus daily, there are multiple pickups. During one of their pickups, if our PE gate is open, their parents will drive on our campus and use it as a roundabout, or form a queue on our campus as they pick up their children. We do not deserve this. We have worked tirelessly to change our culture and uplift our scholars by providing them the best services possible. Then after 20 years, district personnel began appearing and meeting with our previous principal to sacrifice a community that is already socio-economically deprived. This board never mentioned or acknowledged the milestones that we were achieving. You, elected officials, are responsible for the loss of our special education building, multiple classrooms on our site, and six bathrooms as you gifted them to a board member's daughter. One of the so-called classrooms is being used as mere office space. One of my students asked me the other day, why are our desks so close together? And I had to collect myself because this was a 13-year-old child concerned about his learning environment, something that this board clearly overlooked in their haste to see this endeavor through, regardless of the cost to children. At the end of 2021, our current union president deterred us from asking for an incentive like our neighbors received to return to work. She claimed that she would work with this board and secure for us an increase that would please us all. Inflation is 5.9%. What an insult to offer teachers 5%, a one-time deal consisting of more instructional minutes. Newsflash, it is not a raise if we must do more work to receive it. I was concerned when I realized that three of the last five union presidents worked at the district office after their service to us ended. My fellow members, this close relationship is questionable and should be addressed. In closing, we do not need climbers on this board, nor do we need collectors of titles, because at some point, people forget their place and lose sight of things. Thoreau said, "Man is the artificer of his own happiness. Let him beware how he complains of the disposition of circumstances, for it is his own disposition he blames." All the pettiness that we have witnessed from this board must stop now. We are all here in service to children. Some of you cannot see the forest because of the trees, find the forest. We all rise and fall together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Leonardi. Please unmute.
Hello, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak. The first thing that I would like to say is that Anthony, Dr. Anthony Joseph Leonardi is a homegrown San Bernardino resident, and he was, he, I'm sorry, he's homegrown. He's from San Bernardino. He was here in elementary, he was here in middle school, he was here in high school. And I'm going to read a portion of his letter that he- And I'm going to read a portion of his letter that he wrote earlier, a year ago, and then I'm also going to reread a portion that he has currently written. "My name is Anthony Leonardi, Ph.D., and I am a California resident, currently enrolled in medical school, educated at Johns Hopkins, 912, and did my Ph.D. work at the National Cancer Institute on T-cell function dysfunction and immunity. These degrees were enabled by a San Bernardino School District Employee Scholarship and a Governor Scholarship for SAT IX performance that paid my deposit and my moving fees. I am indebted and proud to be a Californian, and I plan on returning to California. The reason that I believe schools should not be open or have indoor classes is that the novel coronavirus is too easily spread by air, and it is too easily spread during asymptomatic periods. To put it simply, the virus is cunning and evil. It infects cells responsible for repairing the lungs, and it infects T-cells as they come to respond to this virus." Those words he wrote over, over a year ago. He has currently written, "There is an extremely important update I must share with you. The variant, known as Delta, is causing 1,000 times more virus in infected people. Experts say it is more contagious and grows more rapidly inside people. In my letter before San Bernardino City Unified School District opened for summer classes, I guaranteed infections and death if in-person classes were held with community vaccination, not up to 70%. It now appears that within 10 days of opening, deaths from SARS-CoV-2 rose and have lately reached a seven-day average, 38% of all-time peak in March and of July 13th. The new Delta variant is much more contagious, at least twice as much. Therefore, vaccinating 70% of the community is no longer enough to control the spread of this virus. Because of Delta, Israel now has moved to vaccinate their youth despite high community vaccine coverage. If open while Delta pushes, if open while Delta exists, hospitalizations will be pushed up, and you will be fueling a community surge and exposing children who are not vaccinated. I am going to be very clear again. I am staunchly opposed to children catching this virus for their immunity. Why? The virus tracks into important neurological systems responsible for taste, smell, and memory. We are receiving, we are seeing reports of Parkinson's-like manifestations and now issues with the brain responsible for memory. It is a waste for children to catch this when vaccines are available. Bringing unvaccinated children into the classroom exposes them to risk. Children should be permitted to have remote learning, and classrooms should have airborne mitigations in place, like ventilation and masks. Ventilation is important as restrooms as well, since COVID-2 has been shown to spread in bathrooms. And I'm reading this and urging that people understand and look at the research that is backed from, that is on COVID-19. This was a discovery made by Anthony Leonardi of how T-cells, the dominant mechanism for how T-cells age, function, and die. A local person here in our community who made this discovery that's impacted how immunity is, is treated and looked at for the entire world. And I am hoping and hoping that people will urge safety and look at keeping their children and family members safe during this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene Carter, if you're available, please unmute.
Good evening, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, superintendent and honorable board members. This is not my, the first time that I've spoken before you. I spoke to myself and I said, "Darlene, why are you coming in before the board? You have given San Bernardino City Unified School District over 33 years and will be retiring soon. But in the back of my mind, I could hear my, my principal say, 'You have to remember your why.' So in the process of me remembering my why, I remembered that I took on this job to work for the most vulnerable population of special education students in this district to be a support, to help them to be successful, as I too was RSP student. Not only did I think about to help them, but then I thought about, "I am in this to not only help and support them academically, but also to advocate for them as well." So as elected officials, you know all decisions you make have positive and negative consequences. I am here to provide you with a report card based on the vote you made to force Devil L STEAM and Leadership Academy to, to share space with another institution which has disenfranchised our most vulnerable population. I know, at this time, you might be wondering, "How have your actions disenfranchised our most vulnerable population?" Well, let me take this time to provide you with an answer. When you decided, you were, to make, wait, when you decided to make the decision to place another institution on Devil L STEAM and Leadership Academy, it displaced our special education students and program by moving our special education from the special education building that was built with special education funds to be utilized by special education staff. Ask me how I know? I was here when all the decisions was made and the pods was built. You may be able to tell new teachers coming along that that was not the case. Where there were adequate space for small group intervention, assessments for IEP progress monitoring, state testing, and a separate environment as stated on RSP students' IEPs, conference rooms to conduct confidential IEP meetings as required by the San Bernardino City Unified School District Special Education Department, as well as planning and workspace for three RSP teachers, two LSP, two LSPH tutors. Now, our special ed staff is trying to effectively provide pull-out services such as assessment, conduct IEP meetings in one classroom on the main campus. Devil L special ed staff finds themselves struggling to pull out students to progress monitor in a timely manner because there, because there are three RSP teachers struggling for opportunity to share a space in a room which is set up to service approximately 14 students at a time when there is over 65 RSP teachers, students housed at Devil L Middle School. We're struggling to provide accommodations such as assessment in separate settings as stated on our, our IEP pullouts and to support students that may need separate setting in order to reset. We have difficulties with confidentiality when conducting IEPs or speaking to parents over the phone. Not only that, our RSP, as well as our general ed staff, are being forced to, well, not forced, are asked to give up our planning time to do something. Our general ed teachers are giving up their planning time to fill in. Not only that, I have to give oodles and oodles of noodles to our administrators who are pulling up their sleeves, taking off their pumps, and going into a classroom to sub, to fill in where needed, where they should be available at all times in the front office to handle issues that may arise. Being pulled, our RSP teachers are being pulled from their SSI, SAI service to our RSP student caseload in order to support SDC classes shortage. SAI services can't be provided as agreed upon per IEP, which is a binding contract by law. As a result of the aforementioned conditions, San Bernardino City Unified School District is out of compliance and in violation of faith in both procedural and substantive regulations. Let me explain for those of you that don't know. Procedural violations, failure to implement the IEP as written. Failure to maintain proper records. Substantive violation, failure to assess students' academic and functional needs. Failure to conduct and complete assessments of students' individual needs as, on a regular basis. Failure to provide special education services that address all of the students' educational needs as stated. Failure to monitor the students toward, I mean, progress monitor towards their goals and instructions. Anyway, I want to say this. Our facility issues are man-made manufactured crisis that was preventable. Had you elected to listen to the voices of those working on the ground who works directly with students and families. As being elected officials of San Bernardino City Unified School Board, it is your responsibility to monitor, ensure that problems that arise such as these are taken care of in a, in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Celia Saravia. If you can please unmute.
Okay. Me escucha?
We can hear you.
Me escucha?
Si la escuchamos.
Okay, gracias.
Yo voy a ser su intérprete, le pido que no hable tan largo, por favor, para poder dar toda la información.
Muchas gracias. Primero quiero decirle a Mr. Ramirez que lo sentimos mucho, que lo acompañamos en su dolor, que todos estamos pasando tiempos bien difíciles, y como papás vamos a orar mucho por él y por toda su familia.
First of all, I want to give my condolences to Mr. Ramirez, saying that I'm sorry for his loss. We are all going through really rough times, and as parents, we're going to be praying for each other.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board.
Presidente del board, vicepresidente del board, superintendent.
President, vicepresident, superintendent.
Audiencia.
And the audience.
And audience. Soy Celia Saravia y represento al grupo de apoyo para padres de niños especiales, Amigos Unidos.
I am with Cecilia Saravia, and I represent the parents.
Celia, Celia Saravia.
Celia Saravia, and I represent the parents. ¿Puedo repetir el nombre?
I represent the parent support for children with special needs. Representa a un grupo de apoyo para padres de niños especiales.
I support the parents for special-needs children.
Creemos en la educación.
We believe in education.
Sabemos que es el camino al éxito.
We know that is the path to...
Success.
Success, I'm sorry.
Success.
Success. We know it that way of that success. Our students are the future of tomorrow. Our students with special needs have the same right than the student, the typical student. We have a high expectation. We believe in inclusion. I have my, my Google tag later. Creemos en la inclusión.
We believe in inclusion.
Esta noche.
Tonight.
Queremos reconocer a la doctora Lundie.
Today we want to recognize Dr. Lundie.
Directora de Educación Especial.
The Director of Special Education.
Por el excelente trabajo.
For the excellent work.
Que estás haciendo ella con todo su equipo de trabajo.
That she is doing with all her committee.
Sus secretarias, Sandra Castro, Mr. Denicio López, Mr. David Poor, Mr. Ryan, y todo el departamento de Educación Especial.
All the Department of Special Education.
Gracias por enfocarse y darle seguimiento a las necesidades de nuestros estudiantes.
Thank you for following up and always focusing on all the needs of our students.
Yo sé que falta corregir algunas fallas, pero lo más importante es que la doctora Lundie y su equipo.
I know there's certain things we need to fix, but the most important thing is that Dr. Lundie and her team.
Están trabajando.
They are working.
Felicidades por su excelente trabajo.
I want to congratulate her for her excellent work.
También queremos felicitar a todos los que recibieron un reconocimiento esta noche.
I also want to, I also want to recognize all of those who received an, an award tonight.
Estamos orgullosos de sus logros.
We are so proud of their success.
Gracias a nuestro board por su buen trabajo.
Thank you to the board for all your work.
A nuestro superintendent.
To our superintendent.
Por estar para nuestros estudiantes.
For being there for our students.
Gracias por apoyar a los estudiantes con necesidades especiales.
Thank you for every, for being for the special needs students, for all your support.
Tengan buenas noches todos y cuidémonos para que nos podamos seguir viendo todos.
Have a great night, everyone, and please take care so we can see each other.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And that is all our comments.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments, and we are now going to move to 6.1, Hearing on Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. I am now going to open up the hearing. Are there any public comments on it? No? All right, I'll close it. And at this time, board, I will entertain a motion. No, but, oh yeah, it does say that. I should have went down a little further, you're right. Okay, let me double-check the other one before I say that. Okay, though, that one will have a vote. Okay, 6.2, Public Hearing and Award of Bid Number NSB 2021-22-4 Cafe Beverages Including Vending, $85,425.55. No comments? All right. I will close it, be it resolved that the Board of Education Awards Bid Number NSB 2021-22-4 Cafeteria Beverages Including Vending, the PepsiCo, the sole bidder, meeting district specification, be it further resolved that the district may use this bid based on unit prices to purchase additional items as needed throughout the initial one-year term of the bid and any extensions made in accordance with the terms and condition of the bid not to exceed three years total award as in the best interest of the district. Okay, it's been moved? Moved in second? Is there any discussion? If not, we will go ahead and vote. All right, thank you. Motion carried. We're now at 7.0, Reports by Union Organizations. 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there a representative?
Good evening, Dr. Rogers, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Irvin, President, Dr. Rogers, Vice President, Dr. Wyatt, members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ash Levita Salcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. Tonight, I'd like to let you know about the SBTA Human Rights Committee's 8th Annual Thanksgiving Food Drive. For the last seven years, we have partnered with our district's homeless liaison, the wonderful Ms. Vicki Lee, to bring some holiday cheer to so many of our homeless families throughout the district. And I would like to thank the members of the board and cabinet. And I would like to thank the members of the board and cabinet for their generous donations this year. Last week was National School Psychology Week and I want to take a moment to sincerely thank our school psychologists for the work that they do to support our students throughout the district. In case you weren't aware, tomorrow is National Education Support Professionals Day. This day was established by the National Education Association to recognize and honor the contributions of school support employees. And I want to sincerely thank our ESPs throughout our district, our Union Brothers and Sisters and CSBA, who provide invaluable services and our essential partners, working alongside our members to educate our children. And lastly, tonight, I would like to share with the board that we are still currently negotiating a wage increase with the district and it is now November. We began these talks at the beginning of the school year and we expect the district will fairly compensate our members who have been doing outstanding work and continue to go above and beyond throughout this pandemic. SBTA stands committed to a fair and reasonable agreement with the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seven point two, California School Employees Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Rogers and to all the cabinet and board and superintendent doc. My name is Ben Salgado. I am the second vice president of CSBA, chapter one eighty-three, two thousand members and growing. Um, I would like to take this time to thank the board for hearing us out at the last meeting, the board meeting. And also to the more, more board members that I had conversations with um, last week that wanted to get us more than what we were fighting for. Um, just know that um, my members know who you guys are and we appreciate it. And you guys will surely have our vote when it comes to reelection. We appreciate everything that you guys have done and thank you for working on behalf of the classified employees. It's um, the place has been patiently waiting for some good news and we are happy that the district agreed to a seven percent with retro off schedule. We will hope that next year negotiation will be a lot faster. So our members can put that hard earned money back into their families. No one should be left behind, especially when it comes to making extra money to pay for extra living expenses. We would hope that the board can put a rush on the process so classified employees can have a good Christmas for their families. We waited long enough. And now to wait until February for, to even see any of this money. Let's at least put a rush on it so that we can get the money into the families for the holidays. I mean, who wants to, it's been a tough year already. It's been hard on everybody, so at least let's give the kids a decent Christmas and a fresh New Year's. Oh, uh, excuse me. The classified, like I said, so the classified have a good Christmas and Happy New Years. And last, I know I want to assure all our records that we didn't forget about you. CSBA knows that you are brothers and sisters, I talk to you guys daily. And I want to show you that you guys are on our list and we're coming and we will not leave you guys out to dry. CSBA fights for you and all the unions know that we are in, in, um, in tune with all the unions, that CSBA also have your guys' back. With that being said, I want to say, I hope you guys have a good night and God bless.
Thank you. Seven point three, Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, members of the board and staff, this is Teresa Hunter with CWA nine five eight eight, um, the area VP. Um, just piping in this evening, just to say that we are gradually making progress with um, uh, getting the number of guest teachers, uh, raising the, the number of guest teachers available. Uh, we recognize that there are still a few vacancies out there, but that is really improving. Um, it's, it's really getting down there and I know that there are sites that would, that wish to have more guest teachers come out, but we're working on that. We're, we're getting there and over time, we expect hopefully coming into the next semester that things will be even better. So thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you. And seven point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. No, all right. Okay, well now at eight point O, reports and presentation. Eight point one, strategic planning process overview. And that looks like Dr. Monaris, you are coming.
All right, well, good evening, board. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Board, Vice President Wyatt, wherever you are in virtual world. Um, Superintendent Irvin, I'm, I'm pleased to be here to share um, the three-year strategic plan timeline for the board. We're just going to do a quick overview and then introduce um, our partners, so next slide, please. So tonight, most specifically, I'm going to provide just a three-year strategic planning process and, and share with the board how that's going to be integrated with our existing um, culture of the district, Community Engagement Plan two point O basics and what that looks like um, in terms of aligning that work and moving forward with the, the themes that Mister Irvin has collected from his listening and learning tour. And as part of this strategic planning process, we'll be introducing um, the National Center for Urban School Transformation, INCUST. Um, and they will be our facilitator, facilitators for this three-year process. So, next slide. So there's really three parts to the strategic planning process. First one is really what we can consider the data gathering stage, I mean, that's stage one. Next slide, please. So that's where we are right now, Mister Irvin started and he hit the ground truly running a sprint um, with his listening and learning tour in June, although he reviewed many documents even before he started with the district. Um, you know that you had a special board meeting with Mister Irvin um, just last week where you reviewed some short-term goals. Last night, we pulled a group of people together for a think tank, included principals, union leads, um, some educational partners. They gave us additional input on the short-term goals, we'll be bringing that information back to the board. Um, and so we anticipated bringing that back December fourteenth. We may be bringing that back in January instead, we want a little bit more time to take what we got from the think tank um, last night and some additional information and bring that back to the board probably in January. So that's the one change on this slide, but we will be coming back with the short-term goals so that um, our public can see what's been going on since um, the start of the school year and where we're going till the end of this year. That's also going to be some of the um, the jumping off base for the long tours will help us. This was really be the development of the long-term goals and the strategic planning process. Again, I want to emphasize, we will be um, bridging and kind of marrying the existing um, pieces that we have in the district with the new themes that we received from the listening and learning tour. So the next slide, there you go, thank you. That we anticipate this timeline to be from December through March. We did give ourselves a little bit extra time just to make sure that we um, conduct a thorough process. And during this time, in addition to Mister Irvin does plan on going back to the groups that he met with for the listening, turning, uh, listening and learning tour and share the themes that he heard. Um, and then, you know, confirm that those themes are indeed accurate. So like a researcher, gathering the information, theming it, going back to the individuals, did I hear correctly? So that'll be going on simultaneously, we will be planning the work for the, the long-term strategic plan. And so in that, we're calling that the collaborative decision-making process. And I'll kind of talk through what that looks like in the next slide. So you'll see that we um, have three parts to that. So we're doing what's called the model experience model. So we have an internal team, I'll share who that team is momentarily. But that team will take the information, they will analyze, and information meaning from the listening and learning tour and then um, looking at our, our, our past products. And we're going to be analyzing, developing, designing and drafting a strategic plan. We do plan, we, we intend on this plan being three years. We'll take that draft, we'll take it to the external team, which will be a, a greater group of individuals. Again, I'll share on the next slide who that entails. But that will be not just our internal um, people who work for the district, but also um, external community bart- partners, that kind of work. And we're going to share the strategic plan with them, get input. Um, how is this working, are we missing anything, um, that kind of process? We'll take that information back, so very iterative, probably more than once that we'll work on that. Be, and then the internal team will finalize it and then we'll take it forward to the board. So the next slide shares who's on that team, because we know that the board is very interested and wants to make sure we are including various voices in the work. So the internal team will consist of the executive cabinet and our cluster leads. Those individuals who are supporting our schools and um, and making sure our services and supports for our scholars are in place. So that'll be our internal team. Well, you could consider us kind of like the worker bees. They will be working with INCUST to look at everything, find themes, put something together. Then we'll take it to the external team, the external team is much broader, right? So you can see the external team includes the cabinet. It will include two to three board members, whichever board members would like to participate. Um, our cluster point leads, so those people who would be part of the internal team. But then we want to be sure that we have voices from our principals, we want to be sure we have voices from our union leads. Um, we'll be asking parents to be a part of that, we will be working with community partners. Um, and then of course, we want to get some, uh, we have some scholars from our superintendent advisory. So um, a broader group of individuals who will take a look at the strategic plan, let us know how that's doing, give us feedback so we can improve. Again, more than once, I'm sure we'll go through this process, I don't know if one time will be enough. We want to make sure that there's lots of different fingerprints and voices reflected in the three-year strategic plan. It is a big deal, right? You're, it's something you'll be committing to, which then takes us to stage three. So stage three is what we can consider like the approving and sharing portion of this three-year strategic plan. And so stage three, next slide. We anticipate bringing the plan to you as a board for approval. The um, board meeting right before spring break, so right now our tentative date is March fifteenth. That's assuming all these stars line up correctly and, and everything goes as planned. If we need a little bit more time, we will let you know as a board, but that is our goal. Um, on that, that evening, we will share it to, for the board. Um, and we will ask for board approval so that you have the final say in this um, very important decision around moving forward. And then from there, then it's um, we're going to take it on the road and we're going to do a sharing of the strategic plan, right? So um, right now, we're calling it Vision 2025, the board may decide to label it something else. Um, we are very flexible in that, we just want to have a name for it so people know what it is. And then, you know, the roadshow begins and we make sure that um, everybody knows about it, everybody owns it, because it has to go from the boardroom down to the classroom for it to really be actualized. So that will be the work um, of that final stage. Now, in order to help us do that, we have um, tonight, actually on the board agenda, there is an approval for a consent item. So the next slide, I want to briefly introduce um, INCUST. So INCUST is an equity and excellence um, organization, that is what they're about. They actually did a study of Hillside Elementary School in our district and labeled it one of their, their excellence and equity schools. And why would we choose INCUST? Next slide, please. So they're dedicated to what we're dedicated to. They want to identify, study and promote the best practices of um, schools in the United States. Those who are highest achieving in communities such as San Bernardino. So they um, are in our mind, a really good partner to help us with this process. Again, they will help facilitate it. It is the vision of the board and the work of what Mister Irvin has captured in the listening and learning that will guide the content of that. Next slide, please. INCUST is all about transforming school districts, um, where students achieve academic excellence, where there is a love of learning, um, and where our scholars graduate well-prepared for their, their futures. And so again, a perfect partner to match the, the vision of this board. Next slide. And then finally, why, why, why INCUST over another dis- um, organization? So first, they have varied experience of the individuals that work for them. Um, they are a diverse group of individuals themselves. Um, they are, they have achieved results in their positions previously and in the districts that they work with. And again, they're committed to equity and excellence. And I have asked, um, next slide, please, um, both Dr. Escobedo, who is the executive director for INCUST, and um, Dr. Bass to come this evening, so they are here in the audience with us in case the board has any questions for them. So they're going to come on up. And so I'll stop here, we do have at the end, we have the video from special ed, but if there are any questions from the board at the, or Dr. Rogers, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you for being here and right now, we're, we're listening tentatively, there are no questions as of right now.
Well, just on behalf of myself and, and Angela, we're honored to be able to partner with you. It is our focus and our passion and dedication truly to work with urban school districts. We've conducted studies over a hundred and sixty-seven uh, school systems and definitely very privileged in working with you and more now than ever. Uh, this is the time to create a vision and a mission for 2025. And you heard from your community, they think we need that glue, that connectiveness. And I do believe that this journey uh, through uh, capturing that mission and vision will create that, that unification with uh, all your vital educational partners.
And then we'll take, you can go ahead and introduce and then we'll start the question.
Hi, I'm Dr. Angela Bass and it's truly an honor to be here. Dr. Escobedo and I have really looked over your former uh, vision and we saw many, many things that are good about it. The goal is not to take away, the goal is to lift up and fine tune what we have. And we think that, and we know that we can bring that to you. Um, we're really, we really are studiers, we study everything, we read the past, the present, and then look to the future and then help support you in really defining who you are again. Because we've grown, I mean, the last eighteen months, you can't do the same thing you did eighteen months ago, just can't. So we want to make sure that all of the voices are heard from the students Rachel talked about, to the board members, so that we can make sure the voices of all people are heard. This is not our plan, this is your plan, but we feel like we can really deliver that well. So we, we really thank you for allowing us to do this work.
Excellent, and we have a question from Dr. Flores?
Well, not, not actually a question, just a comment. Uh, I want to thank you so much, uh, it's an honor that you're here with us. Uh, I, board, I clearly know their work, uh, I've read it, uh, they're the top. And uh, we are really fortunate to have them uh, with us and shepherding us to another height, you know, in terms of where we need to go. And so I just want to, I'm very thankful and grateful that you will be leading us uh, because the work that you have done throughout the country uh, is outstanding. And we are an urban district, we are, you know, uh, low income. Uh, um, we have the will, the passion, um, and now the resources uh, to move forward for all our kids. I do, I have read the research on best practices. And so um, it would be great to see what you guys see that we have that is working, but then to know where we need to go next. And so I just, I'm looking forward to, you know, working with you, all of us, I think, uh, the next three years. So I, I just uh, am thrilled, uh, thank you for being here, yeah.
And Dr. Hill?
And thank you, uh, Mister Irvin and um, cabinet for uh, bringing them. Uh, I think it's uh, well, we're, we're just going to go up, up and up. Thank you so much.
You, and Dr. Hill?
And I also want to say thank you. And the only thing I can repeat is what Dr. Flores said, so ditto and looking forward to working with you.
All right, excellent, and ditto, ditto. Like we said, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent Irvin, but we have been so familiar with your work. Like Dr. Flores says, when we hear INCUST, you know, we, we respect you highly. And we're really looking forward, as you said, to moving forward into the new and, and just building upon the foundation that has been, but recognizing the challenges that we face with a new, fresh idea, sets of ideas. So thank you so much, Superintendent?
Well, I, 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 I agree with both Dr. Flores and Dr. Hill and, and Dr. Rogers. I think that um, you know, I've, I've had the chance to collaborate with both Dr. Bass and Doc, Dr. Escobedo. And I tell you right now, um, um, they're both outstanding individuals. And I know years ago, when I was in a previous district, I collaborated, we collaborated together. And uh, and I really appreciated that so. And I really appreciated that support five, six years ago, as I took on another large urban district. And I worked with Dr. Bass in the past and she's done some projects. And they're both outstanding educators. So I think this is going to give us a look into some thoughts about the future and what does it look like? And I think that bringing them on as a partner and a collaborative partner is going to really propel the district to the next level on the other side of this pandemic. So I thank them for even taking on this task and I appreciate it much. So thank you so much.
Thank you again. Dr. Menares?
All right. Well, thank you. So we're going to close up with a video from our special education program. Just a reminder, board, we're going to be bringing a different video each board meeting. So we're starting with special ed. So sit back and enjoy and thank you.
I think I see the team in the house live. Huh? They're back there.
Hello, I am Dr. Lundey and I have the pleasure of leading the special education department here in San Bernardino. As a department, we partner with schools, families, and students to provide individual educational programs that meet the academic, social-emotional, behavioral, and physical needs of students with disabilities. We embrace the whole child. We maintain high expectations for students and staff. We promote an inclusive mindset to ensure that all students have equitable access to opportunities that enable them to participate in meaningful educational experiences that lead to college, career, independence, and leadership in a global society. See for yourself.
All right. So go ahead and shake off your hands a little faster. Remember, we're going to take a breath, guys. If you're going to do it through your nose, if you can't do it through your nose, we're already doing it through our mouths, right? You make your mouth just drop like this. And yeah?
The most beneficial one is the mindfulness and the breathing. It helps students to regulate and to be ready to engage in some of the social-emotional practices.
All right. Now, I need to, all right, shake it out. Remember, we're going to start with tapping. And why do you tap our shoulders for two minutes? All her emotions, right? Now you're slapping, 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 talking with the tips of your fingers. Tap, tap. And then we're going to tap outside of our legs. Tap outside of the legs. Bring them all the way down, guys. Tap the inside of our feet. Tap your legs. And the top of the whole leg. Tap, tap, tap. Good job.
When we think of high-quality instruction and what that means for the special education department, what we think of is curricula, teaching practices, and a learning environment that is standard space in an RSP or mild-moder SDC setting. The utilization of the basics framework in a moderate-to-severe SDC classroom. So that when we walk in there, there is that instant message of high expectations and a level of care for every learner that is sitting in there. There is also evidence of universal design for learning, culturally responsive teaching, student engagement, as well as data-driven decisions in order to determine next steps.
I read two paragraphs. Right? I read one and two. Okay. I want you guys to think of what was important from those two paragraphs and write it down. No, it's really simple. Do you feel like that gets an extended part? You know, stimulus?
Ryan, I love that, yes.
Using time.
Using time. How? Explain to me.
Like sixty-five times seventy-five.
Okay. So you're using multiplication? Multiplic-, okay, multiplication. I love that, yes. And I see many, a lot of fives. So maybe I can multiply by five.
So hello, I'm James Sauer, Vice Principal at Shannon Hills Middle School. And I oversee the special ed department at our site. And we've been working with Let's Go Learn this year in our special ed program. And the data, the robust data that we are able to receive or kind of analyze. But the biggest thing is the kids having an opportunity to work on their targeted or their prescribed program. So getting the kids to get an opportunity to work on what they need kind of creates that equity that we're trying to develop here through our district and at our site.
Hi, my name's Derek Pulte from San Gregorio High School. I teach SDC math and I have a grade range from ninth to 12th. And I incorporate Let's Go Learn in my daily instruction. I first start with direct instruction that leads into Let's Go Learn padlocks, which are utilized to help the students in their IPs meet their goals. The individualized instruction that occurs with Let's Go Learn attacks each deficit per individual student that allows them to concentrate and work on those deficits towards
At San Andreas High School, we look for that special something in every student. We believe that each student, just like you and me, has something extraordinary to offer to the community. It is why our students have unique leadership and work-based learning opportunities. And it is why our special education students learn alongside our general education students. It is why we integrate high-tech sensors and equipment to increase student participation and skill set. And it is why we believe it is important to take an expansive look at career exposure. In the business and technology career pathway, it is more than just about building possibilities.
Wow. Congratulations. So if that was the video that went in, no wonder there's a Golden Bell tagged with it. I know you all, some of you are here, so please stand so we can recognize you in person. Congratulations to you all for a job well done. And we know it's difficult watching yourself on the video. I saw you guys scooting down in your seats. But great job. And it is my understanding also, college and career also played a huge part in their collaboration with you all as well. So we do want to recognize that as well. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Dr. Menares, am I turning, oh, are they, okay. Are they coming on down or are they waving out or, okay, just hugging? All right. Thank you all again and see you on the big screen. Okay. We are now moving to nine point one. We're doing good, board members. We're doing good. Nine point one board members. And I'm, Mr. Tillman, are you going with this presentation you have a question on?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to, and Dr. Flores, do you have a? Okay. So I'm coming, okay. Nine point, okay. So I'm going to start with you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I just want to say really quickly, congratulations to the award recipients earlier and congratulations to the special education department as well. Just really quickly, just want to make a quick reminder for all of us to ensure that conversations that happen in closed session stay in closed session. You know, just a reminder, it's really important that we keep confidential matters confidential. Our meetings are being recorded and things could be said on there that we can go back to and look. So I just really encourage all of us to keep our closed session conversations confidential. Other than that, you know, thank you to all of our staff that continue to work diligently in and out, to all of the parents and community members that came out to express their public comments and concerns. You know, thank you. They're being heard. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. And Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I also want to say thanks to those who were recognized earlier today. We appreciate all the good work you do, students, staff, and everyone else on our campuses and especially our parents. I want to say thanks to those of you who came out to spend time with me today as I received an award. But I also want to give accolades to Jacki Mena, who I've never heard speak before, who did an outstanding job. So you need to invite her to your school to speak. And also Dr. Greer. They both were outstanding. I want to congratulate Doc on the Kennedy Forum presentation. And also just want to say, I think I hear it here quite often, but if it's not said here, it will be said tonight, that Doc, our superintendent, always shares how good things are going on in the schools and what a good job the teachers are doing and administrators are doing. And I know when I have my one-on-one, he usually starts with, "I saw some good things at school today." So I just want the teachers to know, you are so appreciated. And everyone else on staff, I hate to single out a group because, and I think you heard the head custodian from San Bernardino High tonight also give accolades. And I just want to say again, congratulations to the staff. We're moving forward. And I agree and I do believe we can be the poster child for the United States of America in what we are doing, thanks to our cabinet, our superintendent, all of our assistants, our teachers, classified, certificated, and I will include us board members and board members. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Dr. Wyatt, are you with us still?
Yep. Thank you, Madam President.
I can hear you.
All righty. Sometimes I know my volume might be down low if I'm at home. And first of all, I know it's been said many times this evening, but congratulations and thank you to Ms. Irvin and representing our district and our city at the national level, as Dr. Hill said the Kennedy Forum. And I know Dr. Hill also mentioned her recognition, which was really nice too, Cal State San Bernardino for the Catalyst in Education Award winner. So congratulations to Dr. Hill. Definitely I want to echo what our colleagues are saying, say thank you to our staff for everything they've been doing. I know this has been beyond a challenging year for all of us. Today was just an example where our IT folks were able to set me up to be able to join virtually on pretty short notice, so I appreciate them as well. But absolutely goes out to all our staff each and every day for all that you do. We do definitely appreciate all that you're doing for our kids and for our community and our city. Heard a lot of concerns come up, not just tonight, but many times about savant prep and double A Ho and them sharing a campus. I don't think any of us wanted to make that decision. One, because we knew we were going to have two different programs on one site, but we were told that was the option we had. So I think we need to look at that and revisit it when the renewal comes up and see if there's any other options out there. I know we've talked about that before, but I think we really need to explore it even further. I am concerned, I want to know if there are any compliance concerns, if we're out of compliance for our students with disabilities. You know, that was definitely something that we didn't want impacted. And if it has been adversely impacted for our students with disabilities, we need to know so we can rectify that. I do agree, it would be nice if we could get our CSCEA folks the funds that we approved, the, I guess we call it the color or the off-schedule payment for them before the holidays. I think that would be a wonderful gift to them and their families to say thank you for all that they've done. And, you know, and all of us could use a little something right before the holidays. So that would be a really fantastic gift for them. Not sure if we can make that happen, but if we can, we should. So I think that is it for me, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And so, Dr. Flores, I have you up there green.
Thank you very much. I ditto what Dr. Hill said about honoring our employees. We've done, they've come through a lot. I mean, it's very stressful still and just, you know, so much gratitude for staying in there and sticking in there and, you know, and it's for our kids, but yet, you know, we have to do self-care as well. Can't do everything. Maybe pull back and just do what's essential and take care of yourselves and your kids. That's really important. I have gotten several concerns from various employees, both certificated and classified regarding when they are in contact tracing, even though they are tested negative, they are being sent home. Mr. Irvin, could you please look into that? Because I don't think that that should be part of our protocol because then they have to, you know, if they've already used up their sick days, then they'll lose pay. And I don't think that that's fair. I think they need to be allowed, if they've tested negative once, twice, they should be able to stay at work even though they have come in contact with somebody positive. So I would highly recommend that. Yeah, because I think that, I think it's not fair. So, because they'll lose pay. And Dr. Wyatt, I concur with you. If we, as a board, can move quickly to, I don't know if we approve the, we approve the off-schedule pay, I don't know if we do it, I don't remember if we do it union by union or we do it all together, but if we can, that would be great to do that. I am an academic. I am a teacher of teachers. I have tremendous expertise in literacy by literacy, learning and teaching. And what I'd like to share tonight is I went to La Cosecha, the dual-language annual conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and co-presented with one of my doctoral students, Dr. Susana Yvara Johnson, who's now at New Mexico State University. We had between 300 and 350 teachers and administrators in our presentation. That was very well-received. And it was about beginning literacy, best practices. And I had done work in Salem, Oregon for three consecutive years, a long time ago, maybe like six, seven years ago, maybe 10 years ago, I don't recall. But they were in the audience and I went to teach their bilingual teachers. And they reported that the bilingual kids are usually still using the same practices and the kids are outscoring everybody. And when the mainstream teachers found out, they also wanted to be included. So it was the first time that bilingual and mainstream teachers had the same staff development together. So it was, it was really like a home, you know, reunion. So I wanted to share that. And I'm a learner and always learning. And I just ordered this book. It's called Visible Learning. I already read three. I already read three chapters. I just barely got it today. And I already read three chapters. It's fabulous. It's by John Hattie and Gregory Yates, Visible Learning and the Science of How We Learn. And, you know, I was looking at one of the chapters about explicit teaching. And the, the strategy that I presented, it's called Mini Shared Reading. It's for kids that don't know their sounds and letters or know what a word is. Had all the components that he described. So I, I was like, okay, alright, I'm really happy for that. But I would recommend that, you know, we, I don't know, get a study group or whoever wants to do a study group, that we, we do that. So I just wanted to share that with you. Because we are about teaching and learning. And I think our teachers would love this, actually. So thank you.
And Ms. Vassalas Medina, are you on the line? Okay, no, you're, you're done, right? Okay. So, okay, Mr. Tillman.
Has the board voted on the CSCEA agreement yet? I know they come to, we came to term, but has it been approved yet by us?
You have not. CSCEA is still taking it through their six-ten process. They have to vote on it themselves.
They haven't voted on it yet. What's their time schedule for voting on it?
The last I heard from them, maybe a few weeks out. So I don't, I'm not sure on the definite date, but they still have to go through that process of six-ten and voting on it by their members.
Right, and all that factor in to when they can get
Correct.
their pay. And the next paycheck is on the eighth of December, right?
It's in December, not sure about that date. But depending on Mr. Tillman, their timeline for the voting, that, what they're expecting could be January or February.
So long as they know that's all
We did discuss that at the table.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And if there is a way that we could do it, it'd be great. But they ought to be realistic about what it takes in terms of getting it approved, having the board approve it, and then being able to do it.
Correct.
Thank you. I, I do want to look for consensus for the board to have a generalized item to discuss the plan for vaccines. Do I have consensus to do? For the next meeting, yes. And then, you know, this past week when we had the holiday that took place, a work day that took place after a Thursday, we had some concerns because of the current conditions in terms of limited resources for subs. Can we take a look at the remainder of the calendar year? And if there are dates similar to that, can you bring it back to the board so we can at least look at it and maybe adjust the calendar? And then I want to say congratulations to Cojones High School for ranking number seven in the Illinois Empire in terms of football teams this year. And then I want to give a congratulations to Indian Springs, who's still in the playoff fight, representing Indian Springs and our school district. In CIF, exactly. And then I, I do want you guys to, on, on October the second, we actually, I had asked for a information for the last four fiscal years for adopted and unauthorized actuals. You might want to go back and look. The reason why I asked for that, because I wanted to show you, when you look at the adopted budget versus the unauthorized actuals, which is the closest thing to what actually happened that previous school year, you'll see the difference each year between those two numbers. And I, I want you to see that so that when we, you realize when you hear numbers, what we project to be the ending balance normally doesn't happen that way. And, and so for me, the real concern, when I look at all the districts that are similar to ours, whether it's Contra Costa, San Francisco, the districts that are usually similar to us, and they're talking about concerns of budget problems for ongoing budget, I believe it should be our concern also. And if you, if you, if you look in the actual document, if you look at the 2020 school year, which was the closest thing to a regular school year, the end of it, you notice that the projected ending balance was 44 million and then the unauthorized actual was 51 million. Was the closest time we ever met the actual projection. But when you look at a budget of, with revenues of several hundred million dollars, even to suggest that that's what our ending balance is, would say you'd want to increase your ending balance. And so I think the discussion needs to happen. If you look at the most recent year, which was, the adopted budget was, for 2020, was an ending balance of 44 million. And then the same thing, you had a 51 million dollar ending balance on an 800 million dollar budget. That should be a concern for everyone. And the only way you're going to increase your ending balance is to decrease your ongoing costs. And that's why I have a real concern about adding positions and new positions. And I really think we should be in the mode right now of trying to minimize positions that we fill. And I think adding new, new positions should be totally out of the question. I just want to say it for the record. And maybe we can agendize it to talk about it more in depthly. But I think the board needs to be very conservative. And I'm glad we, in the, even the settlement with CSCEA, it was off-schedule and only off-schedule because we don't feel like we have the ongoing revenue to sustain a, a pay raise on schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. And ditto to all the awards, as has been said tonight. And to Doc, I did get a chance to see the webinar, did a great job. And Dr. Wyatt and I had a chance, I think it was today, Dr. Wyatt, I can't remember the days, but we were on the WASC accreditation for Sierra and great information came out of that call. Last night was also another great think tank with the community, being led by Doc and the team, bringing our community partners together. It's, it's really a good thing when everyone is just coming together and brainstorming and giving input. It is a really important community field. Also, again, congratulate the, Dr. Hill. You probably can't even remember the name of the award because you get so many. Yes, the catalyst. But I, I thought about it. I don't even think, and again, Dr. Wyatt, I'll blame you on this one because we are co-chairing and together with the gangs and drugs, but I don't even think we recognize her lifetime achievement that actually I got a chance to present and record for the gangs and drugs task force. So, Dr. Hill, we also want to congratulate you on that for the work that you have done throughout the county. I also want to congratulate, I didn't, I don't think I saw the chief tonight, but when we were in the middle of our goal-setting meeting, it came across that chief got the 47th District Veteran of the Year Award. And hopefully I'm not stealing, probably stealing some of yours, but I did get wind of that. And so we want to congratulate him for his service, not only, but for his award that he did receive. Want to make a note also on the, for the policy committee. A few board meetings ago, I had mentioned about the facility policy getting together. I know you guys looked at the whistleblower one. But also for the facility was to review that again so we can have some consistency with our community partners that are on our campuses, make sure our wording is right and everyone is aware of that. You know, if it's no charge, there's no charge. But I do know there's a, some type of system that I keep hearing about that they get, have to input, fill out a form.
So just to clarify, you would like us to relook at the facility use facility, uh, payment for our, for our organizations that, that, like our sports organizations or whoever that work with our kids.
Yes.
And to see what it says.
Yes, because the majority, or it sounds like they are indeed, are our kids. So we want to be consistent on that. And then also, we may have mentioned the other day about the cell phone policies. We know that the, the teachers have, have reached out and may have mentioned that there are some concerns. So I don't even know if we have one, the cell phone policy that we talked about the other day. We do want to look at Yes. Oh, I think it was everyone, didn't we say, kind of? But however we look at it, you know, but it really was the students.
Mainly the students, right?
That was a concern.
I think we do have a policy, but I don't know if it's that explicit, but, okay.
So please add those to the list, we appreciate that. And then, looking forward, we are just going to be together every night almost. But tomorrow night, we have our, our board retreat. So we will be at the Executive Dining Hall having that. And then, Dr. Hill probably would have asked, would have mentioned this, but, because her memory is better than mine. But I do know that we will be presenting at the CSBA's conference with the parent engagement team. So Beatrice and Randy has us, you know, have been cracking the whip on us. And we will be representing the district. I think it's on the Thursday, Thursday night down there. All right, or Thursday day, shall I say, will be sleep. All right, so I think that is all the announcements. Last thing I want to say to everyone, this is, our Thanksgiving is coming up, but for me, it's Thanksgiving all the time. So I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. For me, it's near and dear my heart because sometimes my birthday actually falls on Thanksgiving. So I'm reminded how, how important it is to say thanks. And I want to say thank you to everyone that serves within the district, our parents, our students, our staff, our superintendent. We appreciate you. Just thank you to everyone. And please take the time to enjoy your families because it's so important, it's so important, family is. If you call my phone, you'll hear it, family is first. I think my son was probably 10, he's 24 now. He put that message on my phone and it will stay there. All right, we are now going to hear from our superintendent, 9.2.
Yes, so a couple of things. Again, ditto to the award recipients this evening and the, obviously the special ed team who are still here, going strong with us. We're going to try to get us out of here on time. But the video and so on. A couple of things, again, I, I want to thank, you know, Dr. Rogers, Dr. Wyatt, and Ms. Aviles for the think tank and then all those individuals who were able to, you know, participate yesterday in our, our think tank and looking at our short-term goals and so on. So that was, that was greatly appreciated, thank you very much. Again, I did attend the CSUSB Education Summit today. And again, you know, Dr. Hill's cracking a few jokes up there. She got the Catalyst Award and it was well-received. She got a nice standing ovation. And also Principal Jackie Mayner and Dr. Greer spoke as well. And then our team showed up, Dr. Funches was there, Dr. Menares and Dr. Eskfeld was there as well. So we enjoyed it. Also, the Kennedy Forum, you know, I really, it was really a pleasure to sit on the national webinar, you know, hosted by the Kennedy Forum. I know that the U.S. Secretary of Ed Miguel Cardona was called to the White House as we were preparing to, to meet. But things went well. And again, we had a really, an opportunity to really talk about mental health and social-emotional learning. And kudos to Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Ontiveros and Colleen Williams for helping me prep and prepare and think it through as we prepared for it because I, I think they grilled me pretty well. So I really appreciate that. And so that was wonderful. Also, Superintendent Parent Advisory Council or Committee, we're still in the talks about having that. That's going to allow the district to have one parent rep from every site. And we hopefully, starting, I believe, either January, February, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Council, again, that's going to provide an opportunity for me to meet with those key parent leaders at every single site. We're looking at right now 72 parents total, but the school sites, the principal will pick those school leaders and then I'll be meeting with them monthly. They will be able to give us insight and their thoughts. And these are parents who are typically not involved with any type of advisory committee or advisory council, but they're involved with the school day-to-day. Like today, we heard from our award recipients, several parents who are involved with day-to-day work, but they will be, actually be on that committee. And again, the school sites will decide who those individuals are, but I'll get to meet with them monthly. And so that's going to be, and most importantly, it allows them to hold us accountable for what we've promised. They hold us accountable for what we've promised. And so that's going to be very, very important. Also, as you know, lately during our cabinet meetings, we've adjusted it. We're visiting school sites during the MOU time, during APD time. I think each cabinet member visits two to three sites, two to three schools. So I've had a chance over the last two Mondays. I believe now, Ginger, we've attended five or six schools professional development time. And that's just an opportunity, something that we've talked about before, was just reminding the staff, want to appreciate them for the hard work and effort. Get a chance to engage with those teachers whose classrooms I visited. But most importantly, to remind them that this year is really, it's important for us to get to some sorts of, you know, some form of normalcy, right? A sense of normalcy. And not, because sometimes they hear a lot of rumors that we're making changes. A lot of things are happening, we're changing everything. So I have to go there myself and tell the staff, that's just rumors, that's not true. We really got to get to a sense of normalcy this year. Secondly, continue, remind them to continue to focus on social-emotional learning, building those relationships with their students and their parents and their colleagues. Also, health and safety, that's still a concern out there. So remind them that we have to continue to be vigilant. And then also reminding them that I'm still seeing good quality instruction. I've said this over and over again. I've already visited, I think, Ginger, over 350 classrooms, maybe more. And the instruction is quality. But again, we're, our goal in the future is to bring uniformity, continuity and consistency in our practices across the board. And we're going to get there, but again, I have to continue to stay on the ground. And then most importantly, even though I'm visiting classrooms, I want to say that all classified and all certificated staff who are not in the classroom have been very supportive. Everyone has been on top of their game. And sometimes they don't even know I'm coming. Sometimes we just make a detour and pop into a school site. But in every case, very excited because they're, they're excited to see us. But, but most importantly, and a couple of times, believe it or not, I don't even want to say this, but I'm just going to say it. You know, I've even, you know, provided a couple of donuts and some coffees and some bagels for a few staff to really motivate them, keep them motivated, right? And they've been very appreciative of that. And so, and then a couple of quick things. You know, I, I hear, I heard what Dr. Wyatt was saying and some of the staff, the Del Valle Ho's about charter school. I'm still new to the district, that has not really been on my radar, but I do hear it a lot. So I'll take some time over the holidays to just really do my research and do a little deep dive and just find out what the issues is going on there. And I did tell the staff at Del Valle Ho, I will take some time to come down there and do a high-level needs assessment, just to check in, see how things are going. I also have a chance, I'll try to check in with the principal at Savant because I want to do my own research. And then I just need some time because, again, I have not been engaged in that and that hasn't been on my radar, but it seems to be coming up more and more. So let me, I, I just asked the board to give me some time to take a look at where we are with that. And then regarding the contract tracing in terms of the testing, you know, staff who are tested negative, let me get with Dr. Funches and Ms., and Eric to find out, Mr. Vettier, to figure out where we are with that. And we'll get back with the board in the Friday update. And if there is an issue out there, we'll definitely make sure we'll address it and we'll correct it very, very quickly. And then in terms, Mr. Tillman mentioned about the off-pay, I mean, the, the pay for the CSCEA. I guess that's a question I have to talk to Dr., Mr. Sullins about. I'm not sure where we are with that and what that process looks like. But I do agree with Mr. Funches, it has to be approved by the board first. And there's not a lot of time between now and the next time the board meets. So I'm not sure where we are with that, Mr. Sullins, but I do think at some point we got to, we got to figure that out. Thank you, Mr. Sullins.
Excuse me, so there's, there's several steps, as Dr. Funches mentioned, the approval process through CSCEA as well as the board. In addition to, we have to submit an AB 1200 to the county for their approval prior to board approval. And we have to at least provide them with at least 10 business days to do that work as well. So absolutely, we hear the sentiment and we will, if there's an opportunity, we will absolutely do everything in our power to, to make that happen if that's feasible, given the timelines that we see in front of us.
We can find out if we can, if we
I'll check into that.
Special board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if they, if the timeline is there and we can agendize that, we will. We will definitely look at it. Okay? We'll check into it.
I'm not, I'm not going to say, yeah, you can absolutely can schedule I'm not, I'm not gonna say, yeah, you can absolutely can schedule a special board meeting. Um, I don't know that, that will help with the county timeline though.
Correct.
It will actually compress it.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, we do what we can, cause we are a board together. Okay, so thank you. And I think, um, on behalf of Ms. Avios and I, we, we're, we were happy to tag along at a couple of schools, but we didn't, we didn't get the donut treat. So we'll come another time. Okay, thank you for that. And now we are moving to 10.1, approval of the personnel report. Date, Dr. Flo- okay, dated November 16th, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions and terminations.
As presented.
Okay, and let's go ahead and, okay, it's moved in a second and Dr. Flores?
And discussion, yeah.
Gotcha.
On, uh, page 32, board, um, there is under classified, uh, there's a re-establishment of a HR director for classified. So I would just like, uh, to ask Mr. Irvin and Dr. Funches why? Since I think we haven't had a director of classified for a few years. I don't know if it's five or six or seven. I, I, I know we haven't had one for a while. And what is the salary? And why do we need to re-establish that?
Oh, good question, Dr. Flores. Since 2016, we have operated without a classified director. When I was in the role of director of certificated, I served over both certificated and classified, which is very much a heavy lift. And not done in districts our size. It is, uh-
Done it for five years?
I did that job. I did. Since 2016. Both sides, classified and certificated. So with the current state, meaning we have so much work to do with classified, uh, hiring, overseeing classified workforce. It is our intent to establish that. That position was on the books. It was never taken off the books. We worked with fiscal to make sure that we can cover that. And the reason is to make sure that we can free up the director of certificated and have a director of classified, like most larger urban districts, and get back to doing the great things that we need to do for our classified workforce. That's the initial one. And then the salary on that, the salary range is 123 annually, about 124, 124,000 annually.
And I just wanna add to that, that in most districts of our size, they do have a director of certificated and a director of classified. And when Dr. Funches mentioned that to me, I know that there've been overstrained over there, the staff there as well. And my initial question to him was, oh, I thought we had a director of classified. He said, no, we do not. And I said, well, I'm not sure how that's possible of a district of close to 48,000 students. Every large urban district has a, a director of certificated who deals with certificate-related issues. That's an expert. And then a director of classified who deals with classified-related issues. And to have a district of our size, especially, uh, we're hearing over and over again, our staff are overworked. There's a lot going on. And so when he brought it to my attention, I was 100% in agreement. And I did ask him, was this a new position or was this an existing position? He had indicated it's an existing position, but they just not have filled it.
He just had to re-establish it.
Yeah, that was all.
Correct.
And, uh, does that 122,000 include benefits and pension and all of that insurance?
From my understanding, it does, but I will definitely up-
I don't think it does.
I'll, I'll update you. I don't wanna misspeak.
It's more than that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. And if there's no further discussion, uh, oh, Mr. Tillman, I'm sorry.
And there's no doubt that 128,000, I'm not gonna pay for a total salary and benefits. It's gonna be at least a $200,000, uh, position. Uh, my only concern is, I, I think, and I keep saying it over and over again, I have a concern about ongoing costs. Because someone says we need to, different positions for whatever the reason, does not mean we can afford it. And to how many positions that have been vacant for five years are being filled now? And my concern is, um, if we don't have this ongoing discussion about where we're at financially, the district is gonna be in bad shape financially. And by the time you realize that, um, I'm right, it'll be too late. I, I have a real fear that we're going out of control in terms of spending. And for, um, folks to have to look through the personnel report, to have someone tell us that they're, they're, they're gonna fill these type of positions, is not the right way to go. I'm telling you guys, I got a real, a real fear for our financial position. And I know people have said to me in the past, well, who cares that you've been here for a long time? I bring value to the district and the board because I've lived through tough financial times. And I'm telling you, you need to be concerned about what we're doing in terms of adding all these positions. It's not a good thing. It's not because we don't need it. We need a whole bunch of stuff. But you don't, do you have the money to go out and add hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars worth of new positions? Somebody mentioned tonight, um, you needed 60 custodian positions. That's another $7 million. And she's right, we need them, but can't we afford it? You can't just go add positions because you feel like we need it. The question after you say, do we need it, is can you afford it? And it's supposed to come back to the board before we move forward. This is not a good thing. And I would, and I would say on this one, that we shouldn't fill it. You should come to us and show us all the positions that have been vacant for two years or longer, that all of a sudden, we're gonna start filling because the vacant position is there. And it's what I said before, a lot of times in these projections, they're not factoring in these positions being filled. Because they have what you call a vacancy factor. And they say on average, over the years, you may have, uh, X amount of positions budgeted. But over the years, you only spend a, a certain percentage of that, and that becomes your vac- your vacancy factor. If you depended on that, but at the same time fill these positions and you don't have that vacancy factor anymore, the board is, the district gonna be in bad shape financially. And I just want everyone to know, so you can't say you didn't know. Once you default, the board goes away. And you get taken over. And that's the reality. And the board, just like this, end up having no authority, which means that your local constituents don't have any say-so. But the, but that's the point of no return. But the only way you deal with that is now. And what we're doing now is not the way to deal with it. Hiring all these positions and this, uh, positions that have been vacant for a long time. And because you say quote-unquote, we need them, we add them. I'm telling you. I see red flags everywhere and I got a real concern.
Dr. Flores?
Um, Mr. Tillman just reminded, uh, me of what we discussed last board meeting, uh, that any new positions that we're gonna move forward would first be discussed in closed session with the board before you brought them to us. And so, uh, we didn't get this. And, you know, I read the, I read everything, not just once, but twice. And, uh, so I, I saw that and it was a red flag, uh, for me, because it's a new position. Yeah.
Sure, Dr. Flores and-
And I concur with Mr. Tillman. We have to be really vigilant. Uh, you know, he and I, he's longer, uh, he's been on a board longer than me, but I think I'm the second one, uh, 14 years. And we are fiscally conservative. Uh, and that's why we've gotten positive, um, you know, rankings, uh, throughout. And, uh, and we mind the, the shop. And, uh, so I concur with him. I, I cannot support this.
Well, uh, Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores, I'd like to say that, uh, any establishment of new positions, we did agree to bring those to the board and talk through them and have them approved. This one has been on the books. And what we can do, we can definitely show you what the cost savings might be around our abolishment of other positions to establish the, uh, to fill this one. We can definitely bring that back to you and show you how we're even interta- how cost savings come into play with this, uh, position. That is needed for the operations of the district on both the classified and certificated side of all our recruitment and hiring and taking care of our, our workforce.
And this is not, this is not a new position, like he says. And here's the thing, though. If, if, if we're saying that, then are we saying that all these positions on, on every personnel report, we should not bring them forward, whether new or not? I, I mean, we, the, Mr. Sullin on several occasions has come to the board and we shared on what our thoughts are in terms of reducing the deficit. Because remember when we came into the, when we came to the district, uh, July, June 1st, we talked about how we were gonna reduce the deficit. And we talked about using those S for dollars, those one-time dollars. And so we came up with a plan. And at no point in time, prior to that, in, during that time, anyone says, don't bring any new positions. So all of a sudden lately, there's just been conversations saying, let's not add any positions on that, let's not, um, create any new positions. But a lot of these positions have been on the books. So, I, I mean, we just, we just need clarity. Are we saying that let's not, let's not move forward with any positions? Even these, I don't know, 70 or 100 on this list, not to bring them forward either? Because we still, I have to be in the business of educating children. And so we have to put systems and structures in place. And we have to make some adjustments and move things around. So at some point, there's gotta be a, a deep conversation about how do we increase student achievement? Because at some point, we're gonna need some positions here and there. So if we're saying that because of a, a pending possible deficit, um, or the district's gonna go into some sort of financial distress, we're not even there yet, not even close. But when we came on board, Mr. Sullins, correct me if I'm wrong, we did present to the board an idea about how we wanted to reduce the deficit. That we in, that we inherited when we came on board, but at the same time, we've talked about how we wanna increase student achievement. So there, there's gotta be a balance here. We have to increase student achievement. That we're still responsible for that. So, I mean, listen, if, if, if someone has a, has a plan, we're good with that. But we did present a plan. Mr. Sullin, correct me if I'm wrong, did we not present a plan to the board on how to reduce the deficit? And at the same time, still provide quality services to students?
So two points. Um, the first point is, I was gonna mention that, um, as Dr. Funches said, is, um, along with the, this position, there are abolishments. So positions that we, we will not have, that, that offset. Um, the other piece is, um, as Doc, uh, I'm sorry, as Superintendent Irvin mentioned, we did, uh, discuss the, uh, LCFF, uh, or LCAP Fund Shift that, um, provides an ongoing reduction, uh, moving expenditures out of base, um, going forward, that would help relieve. Um, we, we still always will have a challenge, uh, when we look at year 24, 25, because those one-time dollars goes, go away. And so part of that work has been the budget subcommittee work to identify additional reductions. Uh, in addition, I've had conversations with Mr. Tillman, we are also looking at our staffing levels, uh, including our position control to identify, um, where our staffing needs to be realigned or right-sized. And so that is the long-term, um, plan. Because as we shed enrollment, we also need to identify, I, um, opportunities where we are right-sized in our workforce, ideally through attrition. Um, so that is, that is the work that is happening right now.
Dr. Hill?
Um, I recall, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Hill. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I thought we were talking about a position where, that's already been budgeted. The money's already there.
Correct.
And we aren't talking about new money. We're talking about a position where the money's already there. So I don't even understand this discussion.
And so, yeah, so that we don't prolong it. And I, I know there's two more, uh, wanna revisit. But we need clarity again. And I, again, I don't wanna always keep saying workshop, but sometimes that's what we need. So we're a fresher mind and fresher head, cause at 10 o'clock, we're going down. It, it has been said, and I think it's probably because it's, um, management-type positions, which is raising the alert, um, each time. But it's also determining, and I remember we probably did this the first year, so I was on the, on the board. And we looked at positions that were going away or, or position that we haven't had. But what I'm also hearing at the same token, and trust and believe, I'm very conservative as well, don't wanna go down that road or even get ne- near it. Um, but if, I, I hear staff also say throughout the district that, you know, it's a lot. They were doing a lot. They've been doing a lot. And COVID has exacerbated it to a level that is just beyond. And so when we look at certain things in our district, when we discuss this as a board and positions, we have to weigh, what, what is it taking off? Uh, of a person, like I'm hearing, um, Dr. Funches say that he did the role for five years combined together. I don't know how that happened or why that happened, but some positions, we will have to justify. And then others, as I heard Mr. Sullin say, that we will have to, um, do away with through attrition because we don't need those particular ones, so that we don't end up with a bare bone. But I do wanna get clarity for everyone on, when we say new position. Cause we're putting everything, almost that comes before us, under new. And then the district is saying it's not, or it was an old position, or we repurposed it. And I really want us to get to where we're all on the same page. And if that requires a workshop, because there's no way, we need to go down this road tonight, trying to bring that clarity. So, um, Mr. Tillman, or I think it was Mr. Tillman and then, and then Dr. Oh, you're, and then I'll take you. Turn you off. Mr. Tillman should be green and then Dr. Okay, got it.
And, and, um, Dr. Hill, if the district were to produce a list, uh, positions, and they, they said this position has been filed, hasn't been filled in five years. So I'll go with five years. If the district were to produce a list of all the budgeted positions that haven't been filled for five years, and you were to fill all those positions all of a sudden, because they're out there, the district would go bankrupt. And you could look to Mr. Sullin right now and ask him, if I, if he gave me a list of positions that haven't been filled in the last five years, and we overnight filled all those positions, the district would be in dire straits. Right now, the district's ending balance that's projected in this act that from, from previous year was 6%. Now, in the presentations he's given us in the past, they say the average district our size has an ending balance of 17%. We should be at least 10%. We're at 6%. When you add, when you spend money on positions that you haven't been spending money on in the near, in the near, uh, uh, in the, in the last few years, and, and you're right, it's hard to explain. But, but, but the finance people use that in terms of a vacancy factor. And they say on average, there's certain amount of positions that are budgeted that don't get filled. If you start filling those positions, you're going to be in trouble. And the whole tenor of the district, since Mr. Irvin's been here, is we have these needs. Therefore, we have to fill these positions and we need to add positions. And if you don't do it, it's because you don't support kids. That's not true. I support kids. And I wish we could fill all these positions. But someone has to have a discussion to say, here's all these old positions I'm gonna fill. Here's how much they're gonna cost. And if, Mrs. Sullin, if you guys are telling me you're gonna fill these positions, but there's other positions you're not gonna fill, and you're gonna delete some other positions to give me confidence that you know that we're gonna balance this budget, then I'm all for that. I haven't heard that.
That's what I was asking for though.
And that's what the problem is.
Can I respond, Madam President?
No, I didn't, Mr., I didn't interrupt you, Dr. Hill, when you were talking.
I just asked if you, you, you referred to me. And my response is gonna be a lot shorter than anything you said tonight.
Dr. Hill, you had to wait till I'm finished.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tillman. Go ahead, Mr. Tillman.
I'm saying this to be on the record, because by the time it's realized, it's gonna be too late. And I've been begging everyone. What this district should be doing right now is not filling any old positions that have been vacant for a long time, not adding any new positions anywhere, and only expanding one-time costs until we get into next year, hear what the governance projections are. Because here's the thing, you have a lot of districts throughout the state who are in financial trouble for the same reason we are, because of declining enrollment. The question's gonna be, how is the state gonna deal with that? If the state says to us, it's up to us to get it aligned with our ADA, then we'll make huge cuts. If they come forward and say, there's enough districts in trouble, we're gonna provide different, additional revenues, then we can approach it a totally different way. But in order to position ourselves to be safe right now, we shouldn't do anything that's gonna incur ongoing costs.
Dr. Flores? And I do believe that we made an agreement last board meeting, that there would be no new management positions brought forth before they were approved by the board in closed session. And so we have a classified management position. All the other ones are the ones that we need, you know, for, you know, that, you know, that are clerks and assistants and teachers aides, and we have the money for that. We have 3.5 or 3.84 million for paraprofessionals that we got from federal government. So that's not an issue for, for us right now. And I concur with Mr. Tillman. Our declining enrollment says 1,000, but it's close to 2,000, and it may be more. And so we have to be highly vigilant, or we will have to do layoffs. You guys weren't around. Danny and I were around when we had to lay off people. In, what, 2008, 2009, 2010? It was not a pretty sight. And so, you know, I personally do not want to go there. And I do believe that, Mr. Irvin, it is procedural or protocol that you bring these management positions to us to approve. I mean, I've asked other superintendents, who are my colleagues and friends, and they say, absolutely, before we put them on the agenda and the personnel report, we have to give you a nod, yes. And not surprise us. We're surprised today because I surprised, I read everything. And so, you know, that's my, I thought we agreed to that last, last board meeting. We did.
And we did, Dr. Flores.
Yeah, but it not being, excuse me, it not being on the books for five years is a new position. Because it says up here, it says, "Resolve the establishment of classified positions." It's, you know, the establishment again. So it's not an old position, it's establishment again of a position. So I just want to provide that clarity. And what our fiduciary responsibility is, as a governing board, is to be watchful over the budget. And that is our responsibility. So exercising that right now.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you again, and going back to one position, not all the positions on there. And again, if it's, and I'll look at the policy myself to see if it's in there about a position being established. You know, I don't care if you've been on the board 20 years, I've been on it 10, and I probably know as much as anybody else here on this board. Because I did a 10-year meetings, I had 10-year meetings for over 16 years before I, before I even got on the board. So I knew what was going on. Some I don't mind telling, some would embarrass you, but I won't say either. But what I'm saying is, if the money's already been allocated for that one position, not talking about all the positions, I want to support putting that position in. People have stood before us talking about, "We need to hire custodians, we need to hire this, we need to hire that." And then you're sitting here saying, "Yeah, but we aren't going to put anybody to hire." Take a look at the number of classified employees, and to ask one person to do certificated and classified. I just wish more of you had worked in education, in the area of education, of HR, because it's a difficult area to be in. You know, as an assistant superintendent, I did some hiring. I did, I did some work as a school principal. But the bottom line is, it's not an easy job. What I'd like to recommend, board members, and I strongly recommend, that we talk to our liaisons to get some of these answers, these questions answered before we get here. And I think with your one-on-one with your liaison, you will understand it a lot better. Because what I'm picking up from this, you know more than expertise. That doesn't come with years. I know a lot of people who've been, who've done something for 20, 25 years, and they still on year one and two. So the thing that I'm saying is, let's deal with the expertise and talk to them. And then when you come here and we talk about these items, these action items, we're ready to vote, not sit here and have a discussion at 10:13 at night. Maybe you're the only one up here who's tired. But that's my say, thank you.
Ms. Biles?
Oh, so I basically hear what's being said, and my only concerns are, I've been asking for, I think quite a few meetings now, for us to have workshops on the budget, right? So that we can get into detail about where is the money, you know, what can we afford, what can we not afford? I, quite frankly, I don't even have clarity on what our direction as a board is in terms of what staff should and shouldn't be doing. Like, I see this report, and are we giving them the okay to hire everybody on here except management positions? Is it just management positions? Is it a certain amount of money that is getting paid to a specific position that we're not okay with? Is it all positions? I mean, I heard Mr. Tillman say "all positions". So are we implying that we shouldn't hire anybody from here till the governors, you know, report? So, again, we are, it is our duty, we do have a fiduciary duty to look over the budget. But we also are in the business of educating. And that does come with either hiring or either moving positions around, aligning the district in a way that our resources are mostly, bestly utilized. And again, it's really disheartening to hear some of these conversations when, when we, I don't even know how to say this, because this is closed-session conversations, but it's really disheartening. I just need better direction as a board member, so that I know what direction we're giving our employees as far as what they can and cannot do, when they can and cannot do it. Because it's really frustrating for me as a board member, I can only imagine, as staff. So I plead, urge, you know, my colleagues here, let's either hold a workshop, so that we can go in-depth and in-detail, or let's do something, because we can't keep coming to these conversations at this time, really getting nowhere.
And, Dr. Wyatt, I don't know if you have a hands-up thing, and I seen you have on the screen, so I don't want to, I'm about to move forward. But I don't know if you were back on the screen, because you raised your hand.
Madam President, I did not, but I'll make a quick comment. One, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Funches for doing two jobs at one time for so long. I mean, wow, that's all I could say. In a district our size, obviously, we're the largest district in San Bernardino County. I'll be honest, I do find it hard to believe that we don't have a director for both classified and certificated. I know most districts that would be this size, and there's not a lot of them, would definitely have at least two directors, maybe even three, and an assistant superintendent of human resources. I agree with Mr. Tillman as well, though, and Dr. Flores, that we have to be fiscally conservative. I've been through rifts myself and had to lay off employees. It's the worst feeling in the world, when you have to take a family's well-being away from them. And you know that's what's happening, because, you know, you're laying them off. So it's a, it's a difficult decision, I think, to make. But if we're able to save money on other positions or cut other positions and show that, I think these are one of those positions that's a critical position that we need to fill. It definitely is a critical position we need to fill in human resources. I don't know who's doing that job now, Dr. Funches, but gosh darn, they might feel the same way you did. But we definitely need to be careful with hiring. I can't emphasize that enough, as well as my colleagues. But at the same time, this is one of those positions that I think needs to be filled. So it's a tough situation, difficult decision to make, but that's my two cents.
Thank you. And then we're going to, Mr. Tillman, we're going to have a final comment, and then I'm going to go ahead and move forward with this vote.
Thank you, Madam President. And I guess at a, at a high-level perspective, my concern is that it's obvious that the district administration has not accepted the philosophy that because of our declining ADA, we should have a concern about our ongoing spending. And so, therefore, that's the frustration that I have. And I agree. If I felt like we had accepted that the, the way we're going to operate during these tough times is that we're going to say, we're only going to fill the positions that are a necessity and that we have already, we're not going to add new positions. And if we have positions like this that we think we need, we'll come back to the board and say, "Hey, we know this is an administrative position that we haven't had, but here's how we can justify paying for it." What I see is the total opposite of seeing things in LCAP where they have a new line item, spending a new $26 million worth of positions. And then the, hearing about positions being flown. And I get the feeling that it's total opposite of what should be happening. But I will admit, if there are four board members that take this district in that direction, then that's the way we go. I just want to be on the record the same, that we're going in the wrong direction and operating in the wrong way. Dr. Hill can say 26 years don't mean nothing, that's, she can say that. But I'm telling you, I worked in the Treasury's office from 1990 to 2005. I was in the Treasury's office when Orange County went bankrupt. So I know how it looks, and I know how it feels. And I know, once it happens, it's too late. The time you prepare for it is now. We're not doing that. I understand Mr. Irvin wants to do a whole lot, he's excited. But if the money's not there, you have to accept that. Right now, there is no clear picture that you have money to add a bunch of new positions and fund old positions without coming to the board and say, "Here's what we're thinking about doing." And I, and I, I'm totally aware that it's not going to happen. I just want to say for the record, that I think it's a big concern, and this district is financially headed in the wrong direction. And I will say this, you know, Ted Alahandjo spoke at our meeting a couple weeks ago. And he's the person in charge of the entity that's going to dictate whether or not we get a positive, qualified, or defaulted certification. And he's not going to say, "Well, because I said, I said that you guys were going in the wrong direction", that he's going to accept responsibility for us being bad. He's going to say he had nothing to do with it, and we're going to have to live with the results. But I'm telling you, the district right now is going in the wrong direction, because they're spending too much money. And I'll leave it at that. And you're right, just to be clear, I'm just one board member, Dr. Hill. And like you said, I don't know nothing more than somebody's been here for two years. And that's what you believe, but I will say this, I would bet money, in two, two years from now, you're going to say Danny was right.
All right, so, no, 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 I don't, wait, hold on a second. I need, I want to get in this discussion, because we are, we got a lot on here. Number one, I want to know, do we, moving forward, want to have a workshop? So that we can find out what positions that may be anticipated, might be, I would imagine you would know that or have an idea of that. But that's the first thing. So, board, I'm hearing yes, I'm not hearing any no. Because that way, yes.
Madam President, I think we should to have transparency.
Yes.
And trust, because right now, we're losing trust. I am losing trust. It feels sneaky.
Okay, so I want, I want to get it clear, I know, but, but again, because we've gone back and forth with it, and we just want to, you know, clear our minds on it. Because that way, it's not just one board member or a board member that's been here, or you, you two, I know you've been here, but we was dealing with it on the other end when the crisis hit, in many different ways. But we want to deal with the here and now, because we don't want to find ourselves in that position. But we also need to know, and something that Dr. Wyatt said, there is critical positions that you have to hire. There is critical. And what we haven't made a decision is, we're, we see that their management position, and so it triggers. So either we resolve that if it's management, it will come and have this, you know, this discussion. But we need to have a workshop, because we need to have a bigger picture of what's needed down the road. And then we can also make a decision then, do we want to freeze positions? Do we want to say, if it's a management position above this amount, so you can have clarity? We can all have clarity and not pull and assume, because we've gave five different definitions in the past month about new. We really have. And I know it may feel sneaky or whatever, it's just because we've redefined it. Each one of us have a different version of what is new. At least, I know I have. So, Dr. Flores, if you could give it, so we can go ahead and take the vote on this one and move forward.
I want to, since I made the motion, I would like to amend the motion that we pass the personnel report and, until we get clarity from Mr. Sullen regarding not just the director of HR for classified in terms of the budget impact, that we, then we can put it back on, given that information that we're provided in our workshop.
We're going to be looking at a quick turnaround.
Do I have a second?
All right. Okay, so it's the discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion that we approve item 10.1 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we are now back at the vote. Any further discussion on the "as presented" on 10.1?
We have to vote on my motion.
Yeah, I was going to.
First point of order, yeah. And then we can vote.
She...
I didn't accept the amendment.
Did she make an amendment or a second? She went back to the original motion? I'm sorry? She, you went to an amendment, she went back to the original.
Since I made the motion, I amended it, I got a second. We have to vote on that first. And then she can make her point of order, Roberts' rules of order.
Okay, so we are, so we had, we're going to go back to the sec, go back to the original amended motion?
That I made.
That you made, which is now?
Right.
Okay. So the motion that's on the floor is to take out the management position, is that what, is that what it is? Right? Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion on that? If not, we'll go ahead and take that vote.
We're going to have to do that manually.
Okay. All righty, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores? Or, I'm sorry, Dr. Wyatt? I'm going out of.
Aye.
Nay. Nay.
And nay, and I think it, yes, because it's, it's a yes. And I do not believe Ms. Rosales Medina is on the line? No. All right, so we go back to the amended motion now? Is there, if there's no discussion on the, that motion, which is the one to move forward at 10.1, we can take the vote. Do you need to? Yes. All right. All right. Fire. You're changing it to Dr. Hill and Ms. Saviles? All right, let's vote.
Mr. Tillman, I need your vote. I don't have it.
What do we have there? One, it's, it's, it's 3-3. So we are, so we have a Personnel Report here that we, we need to approve.
Well, I would like to make, I would like to restate the amendment that I made. So that everybody else can get hired that's on there. And.
Restating that, just to pull the management?
I would like to make that amendment again. And if I have a second, Mr. Tillman seconded it, so that we can do it again.
Okay, so, so, okay, so she's made her motion, you made the motion, Dr. Flores? And so. Just for discussion, okay, and Mr. Tillman seconded it, just for discussion's sake. Dr. Funches, where, where are we on, on this? And even in pulling out one person, or where are we at? I'm just making sure nobody was hired, nobody was told, I just want clarification.
In terms of pulling out, I've never seen that.
Okay. Of that individual, but that's not a, it's here before us because is something that you were moving forward to do?
Right, so we haven't done.
Can we have a recess, Madam President, to figure out?
But I, you asked me that, Superintendent Irvin? But I, I wanted to ask that first before we moved, so we can be clear on it. But I, I would honor it, but we need clarity. So.
Proper thing to do is to make sure that we get this establishment on the board so that we can move forward with interviews and such. We haven't moved forward with any interviews, but it's to get approval of this position. Not a brand-new position, a position that has always been here on the books and is definitely needed for this district. When we talked about bringing new positions forward, we will honor that commitment and bring any new management positions forward for approval and such. So we're gonna continue that, we promise we do that. This one has been a longstanding position in the district that we feel we need at this time, especially for over, or close to 3,000 classified employees and over 1,000 non-classified employees, which classified HR handles.
All right.
Madam President, we still in discussion?
We are, yeah, technically.
Can you ask?
Okay, go ahead.
I have no, no, I have no problem filling this position. But what I, what I'd like to see, and I think it's why we're requesting a board workshop, is we wanna see, you know, where can we save this money at moving forward? You know, are we, is there like three positions or four positions we're not gonna fill? That we're either gonna leave vacant or we're gonna abolish? Because again, I do agree it is a critical position to fill. However, we need to see where we're gonna somehow balance that out down the road. And yes, it's already been built in the budget. But as Mr. Tillman said, you know, a lot of jobs are built in the budget that if we keep them all there, we might have to lay people off down the road. You know, I mean, if we're to fill all the positions we have that are vacant right now, and then two or three years from now, we look and we say, oh gosh, we wish we wouldn't have done that, we're gonna have to lay people off. So I, I'm in agreement with filling the position. I just need to see how we're gonna bounce that out. So, you know, three years down the road, we're not, as Mr. Tillman would say, we're not looking back and say, why did we do that?
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay.
So, Dr. Funches, do you, so we'll just, we agree we'll pull it and bring it back in order for us to move on with business? Or, or do we want the board just go ahead and vote?
I don't mind doing that, Mr. Irvin, so that we can get the other positions and our employees paid and.
I think that's important that we get our employees paid.
Definitely bring back what we need to bring back.
Yeah, I would rather do that, I wanna get our employees paid and, yeah, so.
Well, can we just say the motion again without, because it's out now, it's pulled?
So we state it again?
Yeah, please.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the Personnel Report minus the HR Director of Classified.
Interview 30, what was it? What was the number we put, do you have it in front of you, Doc? Or the page?
Page 32.
And you know, you know what it is?
Page 32.
Page 32.
Page 32.
Got it. Okay, all righty. Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, we will go ahead and vote.
We'll have to be verbal again.
Verbal again, okay. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores, and I don't believe Mrs. Rosales Medina is there, so I wanna make sure, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Hill?
I don't know if I can abstain or not. But the thing is, I want everybody to get paid. But I also want that position filled. And I don't feel I'm comfortable voting aye, because that's not how I'm feeling. So can I abstain?
You can.
I'll abstain, yes.
Then I'll abstain.
Okay, and Ms. Saviles?
So again, please let's hold the workshop. Aye.
And Dr. Rogers, Dr. Daddy Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. And yes, we will have a workshop and I'll get right on that tomorrow. Okay. 10.2, approval of the date for the December organizational meeting for the Board of Education. It's been moved in second, any discuss? Oh, it was Dr. Flores and then Mr. Tillman. You got it, okay. And if there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Did you get everybody? Okay. All right, motion carried, thank you. We are now at 11.0, consent items.
A move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Discussion, any items to pull?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to pull 11.6 for discussion.
11.6?
And 11.27 for discussion and additional information.
Okay, any others? All right, and Mrs. Cunningham, you got 11.6 and 11.27 we're pulling out? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, all right, let's move the balance with the vote. All right, motion carried, and now let's go to 11.6. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I can't bring it up, I don't know what's wrong with my computer, but I kind of vaguely remember.
It's the amendment to the agreement for applied.
Just a minute, just a minute, here it is, I'm sorry. I got it. Okay, so this is the same company, it's called Medemetics or Meta? What's it called?
Applied Memetics LLC?
Yeah, Memetics, is that what it's called, Mr. Soland? Okay. We had difficulty, this is a 6.3 plus million dollars. And I know they've been with us since the beginning. And I just would like, I have several questions. How effectively has this provider addressed complaints and concerns from our SBC, UDSD, community, parents, students, teachers, administrators, and classified staff? And I know I saw that they have an evaluation, internal evaluation system. So I'd like to know, can someone share with me their effectiveness?
We can speak to them?
I'll speak to that, having recently taken over the oversight of COVID. So this company has, it's AMLLC, that's what we call it. They're providing liaisons at all of our school sites. And as far as effectiveness, we know that there are always things that can be approved upon. But what the service that they are providing is a service that at this point in time, we do not have the capacity to be able to carry out. And so they have been very responsive to complaints that have come from the community. We meet with them weekly and bring issues to them. We have recently worked with their, their new oversight person, they've changed over some staff. So in my opinion, in working with them and just kind of looking at the capacity that, that we have now with, in student services around with nursing, they've been doing a good job. Are they doing a perfect job? No, they're not doing a perfect job. But are they do, are they getting the job done? Absolutely they are. And at this point in time, we do need to continue their services because of the volume of employees that we have, as well as the capacity of having a liaison at every school site. And at this point in time, we don't have that capacity.
I did see that the majority of the money for point-plus million was for the liaisons and for them to be on. So my next question is, are the liaisons more, I mean, is the turnover high? Or is it stable? Or is the, is the employment stable? Are they getting better? Because I know sometimes our employees didn't know who they were and so forth. So I'd like to know what type of evaluation you have on the efficiency and efficacy of the liaisons?
Over the course of the last few months, things have become more stable with their workforce. There are people that have been promoted within the organization, and so there has been some movement. But for the most part, we have had very stable people at the school sites. They are developing relationships within the school community so that the principals know who they are, the staff knows who they are. At the very beginning, there were hiccups because it was a new position and they didn't really know what they were supposed to do. But that has vastly increased. We have done surveys with our school community, with teachers and classified. And we have provided that information back to the schools so that they can work with their COVID liaison as far as making sure that there are regular updates so that they know who they are. One of the other things that I think, you know, as we get better at managing this crisis, is providing more information. And so as we're working with this organization to have more transparency and as well as more capacity within the district, we have had a principal on assignment that's gonna help us, who's an excellent principal as far as operations. She'll be coaching principals to troubleshoot some of these concerns because we haven't had necessary concerns with the COVID liaison. It is the process in which the COVID liaison is interacting with the teachers and they have their own confidentiality. So there's some hiccups that we're working through, and so we're rebuilding the team in order to provide those a better service.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. My last question would be, once you have worked with this oversight person and they have the metrics on evaluation of all these aspects of, you know, the, how the liaisons are working, how our procedures are working, you know, are, you know, are, are the concerns of our staff, teachers, parents, students, you know, administrators being addressed? And I would like, I mean, not like tomorrow, but whenever that's available, I think our board should be informed so that we, you know, so that we know and also our community knows, you know, the efficacy of it and effectiveness.
Yes, we can do that. And as we're, as we're looking at sustainability, we are ramping up our current staff with our current nurses. As you know, we've added 12 additional nurses. We're still in process of hiring a health coordinator. It's been a challenge to find a nurse that has an administrative credential. And so that has been some challenge. But as we're looking at how do we take over that responsibility and oversight so that we save the money over time, we are definitely looking at how do we build that capacity in order for our nurses to take over the responsibility.
So moved, thank you.
Your second?
Second.
All right, no further discussion, which that was, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Get everybody, oh, there's me. On the mic off, motion carried. Okay, Dr. Flores, you back up again on 11.27, agreement with Pride?
1127, agreement with Pride Learning Company for a reading program for special education students. And I'm glad that you're still here, Dr. Lundie. I read this very carefully. And I, you know, my expertise is literacy across the board. And I saw that we were gonna be voting on $250,000 for our special needs kids for the Orton-Gillingham method. And that we were going to be paying $95 per hour for three-hour minimum in person-to-person and 75 per hour, three-minute, three-hour minimum a week online and plus optional reports at 160. And so I did an analysis and review of the research regarding the efficacy of this, of this method. And I wanna read to you what researchers, Elizabeth Stevens, Kristy Austin, Clint Moore, Nancy Semica, Alex Botcher, and Sharon Vaughn wrote. And the title of the research paper and meta-analysis of this method and all. and all the studies, which were 24 studies that they did on this method and its efficacy and its efficient effectiveness. The title of the article is "Current State of the Evidence: Examining the Effects of Orton-Gillingham Reading Interventions for Students With or at Risk for Word-Level Reading Disability." And I read and I state, "Over the past decade, parent advocacy groups led a grassroots movement resulting in most states adopting dyslexia-specific legislation, with many states mandating the use of the Orton-Gillingham approach to reading instruction. Orton-Gillingham is a direct, explicit, multisensory, structured, sequential diagnostic and prescriptive approach to reading for students with or at risk for word-level reading disability. Evidence from a prior synthesis, Ritchie and Goiki, 2006, and What Works Clearinghouse reports yielded findings lacking support of the effectiveness of the Orton-Gillingham interventions. We conducted a meta-analysis to examine the effects of Orton-Gillingham reading interventions on the reading outcomes of students with, with or at risk of word-level reading disability. Findings suggest that Orton-Gillingham reading interventions do not, I repeat, do not statistically significantly improve foundational skill outcomes, which include phonological awareness, phonics fluency, and spelling. Similarly, similarly, there are not significant differences for vocabulary and comprehension outcomes for students with at-risk or word-level reading disabilities." So given that analysis and those conclusions, that raised a red flag for me. And $250,000 is a lot of money. I, I am questioning if there are other methodologies that we could use, that we could train our paraprofessionals and pay them to work with our kids every single day, one-to-one. That would be more efficient. And, you know, I, I mean, I'd be willing to look for more research on more effective methodology for our kids. And so it's concerning to me that this is the findings of, and this is a 2021 research. It's current. Yeah.
So I also have, I've done research around the Orton-Gillingham method. And so there's another meta-analysis that talks specifically about the smaller, the smaller effect size of the Orton-Gillingham strategy, but it's really an Orton-Gillingham approach. And the reason why they have a hard time really finding it, the effectiveness of it is really connected to the kinesthetic portion of it because it's really different companies that, that implement it differently. So it's hard to say that the Orton-Gillingham itself approach doesn't work as necessarily as the curriculum or how it's implemented doesn't work. So some, some, so also too, in relationship to the contract. So what we have is a special population of students who are dyslexic. So when we went through the Dyslexia Task Force, we reviewed a number of different programs that utilize the Orton-Gillingham method in addition to other things. So part of the, the findings that came out of the task force was that we needed to get a multisensory approach to reading that we could offer our dyslexic, dyslexic students. And even though the $250,000 is on here, it may not have to use the whole thing, but really, we want it to be available for those students that need it. So as we are using other methodologies, like the first is the Tier One Instruction. So the Wonders program is a Tier One Instruction. So we're talking about those Tier Three students who are not responding to Wonders, who are not responding to interventions in the class, who are not responding to UA. We're talking about that very small percentage of students that may be suffering from dyslexia where this program can be a potential approach so that we can at least try to attack that. And in addition to that, this is, again, like one-time dollars. So in a, in the proposal that I wrote to the state that talks about the funding that we need to address learning loss. So as we know, as students were during COVID, they, the phonics and phonemic awareness instructions specifically for our special education students over distance learning, that's a lot of lacking. So like we have, we created a data dashboard for our special education students. And in that, I'm seeing a high number of third graders who are not reading. So in doing a deep dive here, we have a number of interventions that we're going to try. But we need to be able to have a kind of Tier Three level. If all of our approaches are not working, this very explicit one-on-one instruction should be something that is on the ballot for students who are suffering from dyslexia or other reading.
I, I, I hear you. I checked with my colleagues that are PhDs, who are special ed professors. And they questioned the efficacy of this method with our dyslexic kids. Because, you know, it, it, this is the study that cited. It's the most recent. And I just, I, I, I will have to vote no because it's a lot of money. And just because the committee says this is it. But here are, here are researchers that did the meta-analysis that filtered out all those criteria that you said, the small effect size and so forth. They only looked at 24 studies that were stable, that actually had all the rigorous criteria to conduct the, the study of its effectiveness. And so I, I, I think $250,000 is a lot of money to spend on this company with just this method. And I, you know, I don't, I don't want to debate it with you. I'm just sharing with you my concern, and I will be voting no.
So just, just as a final, for a clear understanding, so the $250,000 is not necessarily all going to be given to the company. However, as you know, with special education, we have settlements, we have learning loss. And a lot of times too, when families come forward and we have to provide them with compensatory education, this is also a methodology that they typically ask for. So part of getting front of the problem as well is me offering it to students who I know are critically suffering from learning loss as well as who need explicit reading instruction.
Who are you targeting?
So I'm targeting students who have been identified through our Let's Go Learn assessment that we kind of showed in the video, who are, according to our DORA assessment, is saying that they are not reading and they're not being responsive to the other.
When you say not reading, does that mean that they can't comprehend?
So I think reading instruction and comprehension are, they go hand-in-hand, but they're two separate things. So I'm saying they're not reading. So they're, so they can't get to the comprehension because they don't understand the fundamentals of reading and their phonemic awareness is nonexistent or very minimal.
Those aren't the only things that are important in getting kids to read.
I agree, 100%.
And, and I looked at their program. They teach it in isolation. And it's just regurgitation. And I, 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 again, I just don't feel that it's going to be effective, and it's a lot of money. So thank you very much.
Okay.
And before we go, and so, Dr. Flores, what, what was the citing of that? Was that, who, who were the name of, yeah? Okay, because I know there was another one that I'm looking at.
Does the board want the link? Can I do that, or do I have to send it to Karen? Send it to you, and then you'll send it out.
And I, I, yeah.
So you can read the report. I have it right here.
Yeah, and I found a smaller one too, and it kind of supports some of it. Okay. All right. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
And if there's no further discussion, let us move. All right, motion carried. Okay, we are now at 12.0, Review of Board Requests, 12.1, Staff Items, and Ms. Ontiveros.
Yes, I'm going to do my best to get us out of here by 11:00. So first, the request came from Dr. Scott Wyatt to revisit the location of the Savant Charter School when it comes up for renewal and also to check the impact of the Savant Charter School on special education programs at Del Vallejo. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we look into the contact tracing procedures that are sending employees home if they test negative for COVID-19. Dr. Barbara Flores and Dr. Scott Wyatt both asked that we would move quickly to approve the off-schedule pay raise for classified. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would agendize an item at the next meeting regarding the vaccine mandate or the plan for the state to implement a vaccine mandate. Mr. Danny Tillman also asked that we would review the calendar for any additional holidays that might fall midweek and therefore impact employee attendance. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked...
Just clarification?
Sure.
Not necessarily midweek? The concern would be like, if there's going to be a holiday, like this happened last time, where there's a Thursday, but the day after is a workday, you know, those type of days, people typically take off? Or if there's multiple days, and one day is going to make the weekend longer, those type of things, what I'm talking about. So it's not necessarily midweek, but I think, Dr. Funches, you understand what I'm talking about, right? It's not midweek though, it's just...
Okay, I'll just, that might impact employee attendance then.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Gwen Rogers then asked that the Policy Committee would review the facility use policy and also the student cellphone use policy. Dr. Gwen Rogers and Ms. Myra Sabios both asked that we hold a workshop to bring clarity around the parameters and budget for the establishment of new positions, especially management positions. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would, related to that, provide a list of the open positions that hadn't been filled in some, for some time that might make room for those that we would need. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that management positions would be brought to the board. And Dr. Barbara Flores asked for a report on the efficacy of AMLLC and their support for response to the needs of parents, students, and staff.
All right, I think that, that covers everything. All right. So we are adjourning to closed session shortly, and we will not be reporting out. Yes, we're going back into closed session, so we're adjourning, but to closed session shortly. And we just want to say to everyone again, thank, Happy Thanksgiving, and we appreciate all of you, and good night, and God bless.